In the May eighth meeting of the Tiverton, what is Joe wearing on his head?
Yeah.
I think he's getting ready for.
I figured I'd brighten up.
We can only see the hat though.
Yeah, we can't see your head, just the hat.
He's lighting up our lives.
Oh, all right.
There you go, Joe. I like it.
There you go.
The blue, the blue.
You got to brighten up the party.
Yeah, people might um wonder what you're doing there, Joe. All right. I'd like to bring to order the March eighth meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic.
To the states.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Most.
Madam Clerk, would you like to do the roll call, please?
Counselor Burke.
Here.
Counselor Janik.
Present.
Counselor Viera.
Here.
Counselor Edwards.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiras.
Present.
All present.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to bring six presentations, Hags Sahadi and Company, PC Annual Financial Report two, above the consent agenda due to scheduling problems for Sahadi.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, motion's been made in second. All those in favor, Counselor Janik?
Yes.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Viera?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And Counselor Perry?
Yes.
And he took off his hat. All right, so um who's here to represent? I imagine it's Josie Ann Arujow.
Josie Ann, do you have anybody else with you that you want?
There's a Raquel. Who's that?
Don't know. Josie Ann, can you hear us?
Her mic's not on.
I know.
There's also Raquel Machado that was just allowed in.
I don't know who that is.
Well, who allowed her in?
I didn't, I didn't.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Yeah, they're both auditors, Amy says.
Okay.
Hello?
Oh.
Hi, this is Raquel Machado speaking. Mary Sahadi should be joining us momentarily. She'll be the one to um complete the presentation today.
All right, would you like us to wait for her?
Yes, if you don't mind. I'm actually gonna give her a call right now.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay. It was her request, guys, because she has two presentations to give tonight, so she's hoping to give out hours early so that she can go to the next one. And she was gracious enough to change her schedule to do this for us tonight.
Do you want Denise Saretta in as well?
Um, yes. Denise is always someone that gives us good insight.
Yep.
Amy Rodrick is asking to come in.
Amy Rodrick?
Amy Rodrick.
She's the financial for the schools.
Hi, um, would it be possible if Mary could start in fifteen minutes? Unfortunately, she she's on the phone with another client. Would that be all right on the to push it about fifteen minutes on the agenda?
Um, sure.
All right, thank you so much.
That's probably right around where we would have gotten to her, but.
Okay, I apologize for the confusion.
No, no, it's no big deal. I'm only kidding.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll go to consent agenda. Mike, is that all right? If I just go on?
Yes, okay.
Okay, consent agenda. Sorry, I'm off video here.
We can hear you.
Okay, um consent agenda, approval of town council minutes, February twentieth, twenty twenty-one, special budget meeting, uh, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, regular session, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one workshop, meeting, acknowledgement receipts of minutes from boards and commissions and committees, Tiverton Open Space One, Board of Canvases One, Planning Board Two, acknowledge of receipts of reports, Town Administrator, Department Monthly Reports, February twenty twenty-one, Town Administrator, Police and Fire Department Overtime, twenty twenty-one of February, and Jennifer Salustiano, uh, Town Planner and Administrative Officer, Report of Activities of Planning Department and Planning Board for February twenty twenty-one. Acknowledgment of receipts and correspondence, David J. Paul, Heart Safe Tiverton Coordinator Regarding Lucas Three Chest Compression System, Town Recovery Resolution Requested, General Assembly, amend Rhode Island General Law forty-four five-two maximum levy, City of East Providence Resolution in Support of After School and Summer Programs for Rhode Island's Youth, Approval of Tax Assessment Abatement, total sixteen hundred and seventy-one dollars. Town Clerk, request approval of to advertise for open positions on boards and commissions, Arts Committee One, Building Code, Board of Appeals, PE Appointment, Historic Preservation Advisory Board, and there isn't what's open, but I think it's one, um, Historical Cemetery Commission Two, Housing Authority One, Juvenile Hearing Boards Two, and that would be the alternates, Lit Committee One, Recycling Two, Library Board of Trustees Two, Open Space Commission Two, Planning Board One, Tax Assessment Board of Review One, and if any counselors can think of anyone that would be interested in this, we would really appreciate you contacting them. Would anyone like to um take any of the consent agenda off?
Nope, make a motion.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. The exception is given.
Uh, a motion was made by Counselor Perry to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Counselor Burke. All those in favor, Counselor Janik?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Viera?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Public comments regarding uh, uh, council agenda or other town business. Uh, I don't see that we received any.
We did. Hang on.
Okay.
Let me pull it up. Jeannie sent it to me late in the day.
Yeah, she sent it to us too.
Apologize, I didn't know.
It's okay, yeah. No, it just came in. Um, where the heck did it go?
Yeah.
About three o'clock today.
One person re- uh, referring to seven A.
Jeannie sent it at four sixteen today. She received it after three.
Chris, I had, do you want me to? I found it, do you want me to read it?
Because I don't have it.
Well, I'm looking at the attendees right now, and Sherry Akri has her hand up.
It's not for Sherry.
It's not. It was somebody about the uh.
From Clayton Lawson.
Right.
Oh.
So do you want me to read it?
If you have it, you can read it. I I'm.
Is he in the, yeah, I mean, is he in the waiting room?
Um, not unless he is.
What's his name?
Clayton Lawson. There's a phone number two oh three three six that I don't.
So, um.
I know.
Just read the comment.
Okay. Um, Town Council, this is from Clayton Lawson. Um, Town Council, I fully oppose any motion to repeal Resolution nineteen dash zero one and request all council members with voting ability extend the resolution instead. Best A Clayton Lawson, the third resident.
Right, thank you. Um, Sherry Akri does have her hand up for public comment. Um, can we bring her in?
As soon as I get her, hang on. Sherry?
Hi, Sherry.
Hi.
I saw your hand up. Would you like to make a comment?
Yes, please. Um, I also am commenting about Agenda Item ten A, um, and my wish to not, that the council not support resol- um, you know, repealing Resolution nineteen oh one. Um, I wrote a little statement. Um, first, let me read to you a de- a direct quote from Ronald Mann, Deputy Director of the Co- of the Commission on the Bicentennial of the United States Constitution. Quote, sadly, with the passing of time, the oath or affirmation of office has become perfunctory. It has lost its meaning to many of our elected leaders, end quote. This town council and the rest of us that are elected officials swore our oath when we took office to support, enforce, and abide by the Constitution of the United States and the state of Rhode Island. The resolution was passed to emphasize the commitment and duty to that oath, specifically saying that Tiverton leaders recognize that the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution, um, that they recognize it and will protect the rights of Tiverton citizens by supporting, enforcing, and abiding by those rights afforded in both the United States and Rhode Island Constitution. Um, Tiverton town citizens filled the town hall to support and urge the town council to pass this resolution um, as a reminder of the town's respect for our constitutional rights and to pre- and to prevent infringement upon the constitution right of the peoples to keep and bear arms. Um, and if you vote to remove this resolution, you are in fact voting to violate that oath and indicate to Tiverton citizens that you do not support or are not willing to enforce or abide by the constitutions that guide your service to the public. Your oath binds you to that service. Um, the people asking to remove the resolution may not understand the meaning, purpose, and responsibility incorporated in the oath you took or that we all took. It is your duty to support the constitutional rights of the citizens you represent. Maintaining the resolution indicates you are committed to doing that duty. That's it.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments from uh, the attendees?
I don't see any.
Uh, someone else has their hand up. Do you see what I'm looking at? Nancy has her hand up.
Yep.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi, I just have a question. I'm sorry, my my computer got.
Nancy Driggs?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. It didn't say who you were.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. My my computer got a little mixed up. Did we have the public, did you already do the public hearing on the casino revenue?
No, no, we have not.
Oh, thank you, because I I had to, I don't know, something happened. So that's fine. That's what I'm here for. Goodbye.
Okay, thank you. Goodbye. All right, so I see that Mary Sahadi is here. Welcome, Mary. We're gonna start, um, Item Six, Presentation, Hags Sahadi and Company, PC Annual Financial Report, year ending June thirtieth. Is everyone present? Did we bring uh, did we bring Amy Rodrick in?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we bring Amy Rodrick in? She's the school department's financial officer, I believe. Welcome, Amy.
Hi.
Hi. All right, Mary, um, you can continue.
Um, so. First stop, right, Denise. Um, so thank you for having us here this evening. Um, with me this evening is um Josie, who's the manager on this engagement, as well as Raquel, who was one of the supervisors um, on this engagement as well. Um, I'm assuming everyone has in front of them their financial statements. Um, I don't know if you want me to share the screen or if you just want me to speak to the um, financial statements, but I did put together a short PowerPoint. It's it's really more or less um, what we would normally talk about, but I wasn't sure with the meetings being done now, how the town would like to proceed.
You can do the PowerPoint. It's always helpful for the audience to um, be able to join us and look at what we're looking at.
Okay, so let me see if I can do this without messing this up.
I certainly can't, so I'll I'll give you credit if you can.
All right, hold on a second. Hold on a second. I think I can do this. Can can you guys see it yet or no?
No.
I am. Hold on, hold on. It should have come up here. Selecting window, huh?
If you're having difficulty, Mary, it's okay.
I I got it. Hold on.
Okay. There we go.
Here it goes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I'm still getting used to this after probably nine months of doing this, right?
Oh, I know, it's awful.
Uh, anyway, so um, your financial sta- you should have your financial statements in front of you. Uh, what we will talk about this evening is uh, the town, the result of the town's audit as well as the town's uniform guidance report. Now, that uniform guidance report is what used to be referred to as the single audit. So for those of you that occurred to speak about this in the past, I always spoke about it as being part of the single audit. So the title has changed um, by the GASP. And then we'll just speak briefly about a couple of the accounting standards. One actually was delayed because of COVID and another actually will be implemented in this coming year. Um, at any time, you know, during this presentation, you want to stop me and ask any questions, um, or Josie or Raquel, we'd be happy to try to help you. Um, in your report, there are two audit reports that are included. The audit report on the financial statements um, taken as a whole, and there we have what is referred to as a clean audit report. Um, it's included on page five of the document that you have in front of you. Um, normally, what we would do is we would opine on the financial statements is what, which is what we do each year, and in addition, um, we apply limited procedures on required supplementary information, and that required supplementary information is all of your pension and OPEB information as well as your budget and actual. In addition to that, on page one seventy-six, we report on the town's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. And in both reports, the town received unmodified reports and received no findings. And unmodified is really, again, the same as what was referred to many years ago, or or even still recently, people refer to it as a clean report. The next section of your financial statements is the management discussion and analysis. Oh, hold on one second. Okay, that's better. I had noise in the background. Um, the next section of the financial statements is the management discussion and analysis. And here is where the town has the opportunity to provide the readers of the financial statement in layman's terms, a narrative of the overview. So, um, the first section would be dividing the government-wide or financial statements or the narrative as it relates to the government-wide financial statements, different from the governmental financial statements. So the town exceeded this year, the government, the liabilities and the deferred inflows of the town exceeded the assets and deferred outflows by twelve million dollars, and that's primarily because that's primarily because of the pension and the OPEB liabilities. Um, the town's government-wide financial statements, the operating expenses were sixty-two million dollars, and that's a twelve percent increase over the prior years, with the revenues collected at fifty-two million seven, um, which is a sixteen point five percent decrease over the prior year. Now, in this particular fiscal year, in fiscal year twenty-one, things were so significantly different because of COVID than they were in prior years, it's almost impossible to make comparisons from one year to the next. So um, although you have some increases um, in your operating expenses and decreases in your revenue, um, a lot of that is strictly related to either your change in your pension and your OPEB or also um, the changes that were a result of COVID this past year. The governmental funds, um, those are the funds that really relate to what you do as a board um, each year when you're passing your budget and you're talking about the funds. Your governmental funds are presented in the modified accrual basis of accounting, which is similar to, or in your case, identical to the way you budget. So your governmental funds had an end-in-fund combined fund balance of seventeen million one hundred and forty-six thousand. Of that amount, three point nine million or eight point four five percent was unassigned in the general fund and available for use, and the town designated and fiscal policies, four hundred and ninety-three thousand or just um, under a half a million dollars was available for school expenditures, and eleven million six sixty-five was set aside for the remaining non-major governmental funds. So bringing your attention here to the amount unassigned in the general fund, eight point four five is a decent percentage. The GASP always looks at unreserved fund balance and stabilization funds and suggests that they should be between ten and fifteen percent of your budget. So in your case, um, your unassigned fund balance is is doing pretty well. Um, at the end of your fiscal year, your general fund unassigned, I just indicated that was um, three point nine percent or eighteen point two percent of your general fund expenditures. So you see that you are above, slightly above, what the GFOA uses as a benchmark for purposes of what your unassigned balances should be. Um, on your budgetary basis, you will see um, that your revenues exceeded your expenditures and transfers by four hundred and forty-two thousand, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in the future on another slide, and your school department unrestricted um, fund ended with a combined fund balance of four hundred and ninety-three thousand or one percent of the current year budget. Um, you know that the, obviously, you had some discussion even this evening, your Tiverton Casino-owned hotel, it was officially opened, but due to the pandemic, um, those minimum guarantees of three million dollars in gaming revenue um, was lost. On pages twelve through fourteen, the city sees its financial positions and changes in financial position in a condensed format, and we'll talk about that a little bit further as we um, progress through the financial statements. But again, um, these pages twelve through fourteen are really shown for, um, the reader that just wants to look at the financial statements as sort of a big picture. And on page sixteen, um, that's where the town has the opportunity, again, because management discussion and analysis is just that, it's it's your discussion um, of the outcome of fiscal year two thousand twenty, or potentially, in in this particular section, um, your economic factors that may affect your next year's budget. So I just highlighted a couple of items that were included in the narrative that was provided to us um, from management, and, you know, again, we looked at um, this year, you saw a decline in your revenue from building permits, um, your police and fire details, your meals, your beverages, your hotel tax, all of these items were down, not only in the town of Tiverton, but across the country, really, as it related to um, the pandemic that we were all hit with. Um, what did the town do? Um, you know, you obviously stopped some discretionary spending. You did some freezing of um, expenditures. You didn't build some vacant positions, um, and quite frankly, um, just like a mi- many of the other communities, a lot of your capital projects, you know, had stopped. The town took legislative action in order to issue one quarter tax bills in July based on the prior year levy. Um, this obviously provided you with some cash flow and allowed for the continuing operations until the state took some further options, our our actions, rather. Um, and other than that, um, again, from Tiverton's point of view, um, really no different than any of your other communities going forward with regard to COVID, the pandemic. Um, you know, June thirty, things were still really, everyone was still really unsure of fiscal twenty-one and did what they could at June thirty-two thousand twenty to um, pass budgets and go forward into this fiscal year. So quite frankly, I think fiscal twenty-one is just going to have a number of areas that either what weren't planned for or a result that you didn't anticipate. Following that section of your financial statements, um, the financial statements or the financial section includes your government-wide financial statements. Those are the statements that are fully accrual. Um, your governmental funds, we spoke about those a second ago. It's gonna be your general fund, your unrestricted school fund, and your non-major funds, your proprietary funds, fiduciary funds, the notes, the required supplementary, and then for the town of Tiverton and many actually of the Rhode Island communities, we include the combining statements along with the collector's report and then the MTP two, which is required by the state. The statistical section is an optional section, um, and we'll talk a little bit further about that um, as we get to the end of the PowerPoint. Your government-wide financial statements, again, to be clear, they're presented on the full accrual basis of accounting. Uh, you'll see on page twenty-four, if anyone has their statements in front of them, they can flip to page twenty-four. But you'll see on page twenty-four what the differences are between your full accrual financial statements and those statements that are referred to as your governmental statements. And the majority of the differences here are your assets um, and depreciation are included in your government-wide as well as their related debt, and then your pension and OPEB liabilities are also included in your government-wide financial statements. And the same is true with the page that follows with regard to the change in the financial position, which differs from the governmental fund financial statements in those same general areas, right? The areas of capital outlay and the areas of long-term debt activities. Your government-wide financial statements, um, they're similar to your proprietary funds. So remember, if you look at your proprietary funds, those funds are also included as full accrual financial statements. So when you look at your government-wide financial statements and you see the business-type activities and you compare them to the proprietary fund statements, which are included on pages twenty-seven through twenty-nine, there are no differences. Where, as we just said, with your governmental, um, there are significant differences between your governmental funds and your government-wide. The same is true with um, your fiduciary funds. Um, there are differences there as well. That's, those are gonna be your funds that are going to be your pension fund, your trust fund, any agency funds, as well as um, your private purpose trust funds. And those because you're holding the money on behalf of another, so on behalf of your staff or your employees um, for the pension trust funds or on behalf of those um, agency funds. Those fiduciary funds are not included in your government-wide statements. So when you're comparing the two, you won't see them included. Your governmental funds, um, this section of your financial statements includes your ge- your general fund, your special revenue fund, and your capital project funds. Your general fund will always be considered a major fund, and you'll present um, any difference. And you'll present any differences that might occur between your budget and actual and your general fund in a reconciliation. For the town of Tividan, there are no differences. So the surplus that you see in your governmental funds for your general fund, four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars is the same surplus you see on page ninety-two of the statements. The school unrestricted is also generally Rhode Island considered a major fund. Here, there is a difference between the budget and actual that's presented on page ninety-four. Your GAAP financial statements, as well as the budgetary statements, had a deficit of eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And I just want to note, and we we did asterisk this on page ninety-four, but just note that the town appropriated an additional two hundred and sixteen thousand for capital this past year. And three hundred and sixteen thousand was due to state aid shortages. For the town of Tividan, there are no other major funds. So the remaining special revenue funds, capital project funds, permanent funds are all presented in that next column that you see entitled non-major funds. What we do provide for you, however, is as supplementary information, we provide all of that detail starting on page one twenty-one. So if you're looking at the non-major funds that we opine on, you want to, and you want any of that detail. If you look back in the back of the document, starting on page one twenty-one, you'll see there where we present all of the detail of every fund. The enterprise funds in the town of Tividan, you have three enterprise funds, you have that land acquisition fund, the cafeteria fund, and the early riser funds. They're all shown on pages twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. Twenty-seven and twenty-eight have your basically your balance sheet and your revenue and expenses, where twenty-nine is the required cash flow analysis. These funds had a total operating revenue of six hundred and three thousand dollars. Total operating expenses of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. A small transfer of sixteen thousand with a total change in net position of a deficit of nineteen thousand eight hundred eleven thousand dollars. And here, the land acquisition and the early risers are both very small funds. Land acquisition really doesn't have any activity. So the majority of what we just, what I just discussed with you in terms of operating revenue and expenses all relate to your cafeteria fund. Your fiduciary funds include, as I indicated, your pension and other post-employment trust funds. If you look on pay, look in note twelve, in particular on page eighty-five, you'll see that the net position in your pension funds is thirteen million eight hundred thousand. And your net position in your OPEB with our post-employment benefits is three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Now, your pension, your pension plans are made up of your multiple pension plans, most of which have a required annual contribution where your other post-employment plan is really regulated or or funded by the town's vote in terms of the annual budget. The other funds that you have here are your private purpose trust funds as well as your agency funds. Following the basic financial statements are your notes to the financial statements themselves. Here is where we include a summary of the accounting policies of the town. We include a lot of detail on some of the balance sheet items to provide you with some additional detail that you may not be able to see on the face of the statement. So for an example, you'll see an extended note on cash and cash equivalents. You'll see a note on your capital assets as well as your long-term debt. And then you'll see a number of required disclosures for both your pension and OPEB. We provide you with some additional information on risk management, on commitments and contingencies. And in this year, different than all of the prior years, the generally accepted accounting principles for governments have required us to include a note with the town's response to the state of emergency as it relates to the pandemic. So normally, your last note is a note on subsequent events. This year, you have two notes or a combined note that speaks to the town's response to the pandemic. Following your notes to the financial statement is the section of the statement that is required supplementary. So required means just that, right? The government requires us to include not only all of the pension and OPEB information that you see in your financial statements, but they also require us to present a budgetary comparison for any governmental funds that have a budget. So in your case, it would be the general fund as well as the school unrestricted. So presented on pages ninety-one and ninety-two, you will see that the actual revenues earned were less than budgeted by three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, made up primarily with a shortfall in property taxes. I'm sorry, revenue with a positive turnback in property taxes of three hundred and fifteen thousand and a shortfall in state aid of one twenty-two. Revenue, by the way, in excess of budget includes licenses and permits, and that was also to the positive of a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. On the expense side, the significant differences were unspent public safety money for four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, unspent finance administration in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, unspent public works of hundred and twenty-two. And as you described in your MDNA, unspent capital outlay of three hundred and fifty thousand. So some of this was directly related to, you know, putting a freeze on certain expenditures that the town made a conscious decision to do other items that you just couldn't get completed as it related, as it related to the pandemic. This screen just gives you an idea. You have multiple pension plans. This is all included in note eleven of the financial statements themselves. But you'll see where some of your retirement plans are overfunded and some of your retirement plans actually have a net asset. So this is just for information with regard to the plans themselves. The new accounting standards that we're talking about, I mentioned briefly at the beginning of the presentation, is GASB eighty-four. It's a fiduciary activities. It is effective for periods beginning after December fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. This is the one that was delayed as a result of COVID nineteen or the pandemic. And then going forward, GASB eighty-seven will deal with leases. And that will be for periods beginning after June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And basically, what GASB eighteen is going to do is it's going to eliminate the distinction between operating leases and capital leases. And there'll only be one type of lease that will be disclosed in your financial statements going forward. Any questions on the financial statements themselves? So moving into the smaller document you received, that's the document that we referred to in prior years as the single audit report. It's now referred to as the uniform guidance report. In this report, we issue a separate report, so you, it's separate from your financial statements. We report here on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And we include a report on compliance with major programs. And major programs by the government are defined as programs over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So for the town of Tividan, your federal expenditures this past year were two million oh eleven nine thirty-four. And we tested as major your child nutrition program cluster, which had federal expenditures of two ninety-eight, nine eighty-one. And we also tested the federal, I mean, the sped special education cluster of seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. As I indicated earlier, in terms of clean reports, your financial statements themselves received an unmodified report. That's referred to as a clean report. You had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies that were not considered material weaknesses and no non-compliance issues. As it relates to the two programs that we tested, as far as the internal controls were concerned, you had no material weaknesses, but we did in fact, identify a significant deficiency in one of your programs. But even with that deficiency, you still received unmodified opinions on your compliance reports for both sped and your school lunch programs. And the deficiency had to do with qualifying expenses that were expended during the proper period of availability, June one nineteen to June twenty. However, your federal dollars weren't drawn down on a timely basis. So what that really means is the way the programs work is you need to minimize the time between the time you disperse the funds and the receipt of those grants. And in this particular case, eighty-four point oh twenty-seven is your special education fund. And there was, the time lapse was too great. So it didn't change the report letter, but it needed to be modified. And the school department responded, and you'll see that in the document as well, with their comment that it would be corrected going forward into the next fiscal year. And, you know, again, we're required to write the course together with the town. And so, you know, basically, between COVID nineteen and a new director of finance with the school department, this this deficiency will not happen again going forward into the next fiscal year. And then lastly, other findings that didn't rise to to reporting to the federal government, but are being reported to the town in a management letter are twofold. One is the inter-fund transactions. The inter-fund activity between the town and the school department is not, or was not being reconciled on a monthly basis. And so we had spent a significant amount of time really with your treasurer as well as with the director of finance at the school department. And they were able to reconcile this before we issued the audit report. And they will be reconciling this on a monthly basis going forward. And so the activity, basically what this is saying is the activity in the town's books and the activity in the school department's books need to be recorded in the same period each and every year and each and every month really, and to be reconciled so that there are no differences between the inter-fund accounts. And then lastly, in terms of fund accounting, the school department's books and records, the school department here in Tividan historically have been correct in recording their revenue and expenses on an annual basis, but they have not been necessarily adjusting their balance sheet items on a monthly or annual basis. And based on generally accepted accounting, governmental accounting standards, the unrestricted and restricted school funds all need to have a self-balancing set of accounts, meaning they need to have a balance sheet as well as a statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance for each of their funds. So at that point, I really have nothing else. If anyone has any questions, they can certainly, you know, shoot them out and I can ask, see if I can answer them for you. The one thing that I've left here for your thoughts going forward is the town has provided a statistical section in their financial statements, and it includes a great deal of what the GFOA would need for their certificate of achievement and excellence for financial reporting. It certainly doesn't include it all. There are additional information with regard to organizational charts, transmittal letters from management. But the town could potentially consider in the future putting together the rest of the information that might be necessary to get the, the certificate of achievement from the GFOA. It's just an honor to have it. Other than that, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions? I can't see all the counselors right now, so please speak up.
I have a question. It's Donna.
All right, go ahead, Donna.
My question has to do with the, I guess, while I'm looking at this, the blue book. School departments, the reimbursement of grant funds where it wasn't done in a timely manner. Does it have to do with, you were speaking of sped funds and disability funds or Medicaid funds? Did we lose money when that wasn't done in a timely manner? And, and since the children were in school, where was this money being spent?
Well, I don't think Mary can tell you where it's being spent, but she can answer the first half of your question.
First half. So the first half is you don't lose any money, but what ends up happening is if you don't apply for reimbursement on a timely basis, you're utilizing other town resources to pay those expenses. So the cash flow is always an issue when you don't request your monies for any of your drawdowns on a timely basis. So.
Can I add to that, please?
Wait one second. Who, who wants to speak?
This is Amy Roderick.
All right, go ahead, Amy.
So it's important to note that while, yes, we did have a delay in drawing down those funds, our grants were not approved by RIDE until February seventeenth of two thousand twenty. That being the case, we were not able to request any reimbursements until that grant application was approved. So in terms of that, the expenses, to answer your question, Counselor Cook, the expenses we had, the IDEA covers a lot of our out-of-district placements for our special education students. Those special education students were still receiving services, even though we were not in school. They did not go without those services during that time. And so we requested, as soon as the grant was approved by RIDE, we submitted as much as we possibly could for reimbursement at that time.
Okay, a follow-up question, if I could. As far as services for these special education, if, if a lot of the schools were closed and some of the special education requires the child to go to these schools for, for this, was, who, how were they getting these specialized classes or education? Were they at home?
In some instances, they were home. In some instances, excuse me, instances, for some of the students with more severe services, they, they actually were able to accommodate them at the particular facilities. It was a definite combination of both.
Madam President?
Yes, Counselor Brooke.
Amy, just to clarify, a follow-up on that. I believe, for example, most of the Bradley-type schools, which are out-of-district placements, were open. Students were attending them on a regular basis. And most of those would be special education students. Some of your special education students were also attending in person, while most of the rest of the students were, may not have been attending in person.
That is correct.
And I can just say that there was telehealth going on because it was happening from my house. The behavioral analysts were doing telehealth while kids were at home. They were logging in. So there was a combination, like Amy said, of services being provided. So there, there was a combination, like Amy said, of services being provided.
Any other questions from the council? No. Um, okay then. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
We're gonna send you off to, to your next appointment. Um, thank you very much for being here tonight.
So thank you, Denise, for taking this out of order.
You're welcome. Actually, you ended up being in order, so it was no big deal.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next thing is a public hearing advertised. Discussion impossible vote on proposed amendment to remove sunset provision from Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Chapter Two, Administration, Section Two, One-O-Seven, Casino Gaming Revenue. The proposal may be altered or amended prior to the close of the public hearing without further advertising as a result of further study or because of the views expressed at, at the public hearing. Um, I, this of course, this is my, um, agenda item. Um, I will read the whole ordinance to all of you, um, so that the attendees and the public can hear this. So this ordinance was put in place last year, as you all know, in August. And it reads as follows, Section Two, One-O-Seven, gave in casino gaming, gaming revenue. Any re- any revenues or payments received by the town from the state of Rhode Island pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-two, sixty-one, two-seven, and paid into the town's general fund shall be allocated and held in a restricted designated account by the town treasurer, entitled the Casino Gaming Fund Account. On the first of January, April, July, and October, the town treasurer shall we, shall transfer all monies in the Casino Gaming Fund Account to the following account. Restricted Municipal Capital Projects Account and Restricted General Fund Reserve Account at set, asset forth in Section C and D. The treasurer shall transfer all monies in the Casino Gaming Fund Account to the Restricted General Fund Account until the balance of that account is equal to the three percent of the town's coming year operating budget pursuant to Section Three-Ten of the Home Rule Charter. Once the Restricted General Account equals the percentage at set forth in Section C, no further transfer to that account shall be made, and any additional received monies shall be transferred to the Restricted Municipal Capital Projects Account. Any monies transferred into this account cannot be expended until fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, with the exception of an emergency need upon a supermajority vote by out of seven council members of the town council. E, the town council shall establish a procedure for the receipt, review, allocation, and approval of any proposed municipal capital improvement projects from the Restricted Municipal Capital Projects Fund. This ordinance, ordinance shall become effective upon passage by the town council in accordance with Section Four-O-eight of the Town Home Charter with the next expiration date of six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. My proposal is to take the exp- expiration off. One of the reasons is the casino account is still uncertain. We did not receive three million this year, and we're still not sure what we're gonna be receiving next year. We did take from, um, we did take from the general account last year to balance our budget. Um, and we may have to do that again this year because of, of cause COVID. Um, it's no secret that I've always felt that th- these funds need to be put in a reserved account. Um, I'm, and I think it's fiscally responsible for us to do this because the uncertainty of this money is still there. I also think by spending it on one-time expenses, um, also stops us from deficit spending and using this money to run general, um, everyday expenses. So this is what I'm proposing. Now, what's very important for everyone to realize is Section D, I think it's Section D, that says that there will be a committee. I do want a committee. And there's been rumors out there that the town council is gonna use this money just for, for town expenses. And that is not my intention whatsoever. Uh, will be, if this does pass and we, um, we do get rid of the sunset clause, then later on in the agenda, we will be ta- talking about the casino committee. And I have every intention of suggesting that the school committee, the budget committee, and the town council are involved in what, what is going to happen with the future of this money. And, um, I, I also am going to suggest that some members of the public are also involved. This is no way do I have any intentions of bringing this forward. So this is just spent on town council and town capital expenses. I think this needs to be a community effort between all the committees. And we need to get a plan on what is the most responsible way to spend this money. So at this point, I'd like to open up the public session. Um, if anyone in the audience or the attendees would like to speak, um, you are welcome to do so now. You can raise your hand and we'll bring you in. Um, Chris, also, could you, um, tell them the number to call?
Sure. So if anybody's in the public and would like to call in, you can dial in at one eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven. You would have to type in the meeting number, ID number, which is eight three one one zero one five eight six six nine with the passcode of five six oh six three eight. You do have a hand up in the waiting room?
Um, Counselor Janet, you do have your hand up. Would you mind if I got public opinion first?
That's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to go on the record as I want to say something.
Sure.
Hang on a second. I'll, I'll let, I believe it's Nancy Driggs would like to speak.
Absolutely.
Nancy, welcome. Now you can speak.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are, Nancy.
Okay. Um, first of all, how long do we have to speak? Just so I know the guidelines.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. So, um, I'll try to be quick then. The, the, this question of how to handle the senior revenue has had a long history in Tiverton. Um, I remember back when the town council formed the Tiverton Casino Subcommittee to determine whether you even to have a casino. Jeff, Karen, and I were on the Budget Committee at the time, and we spoke many times. And one of the issues was what they were gonna do with the gaming revenue. And then shortly thereafter, after the town voted to have the casino, um, the town council voted to have a charter review commission. And I was one of the people elected as a member of the charter review commission. And again, one of the proposals that was offered as an amendment was to make it abundantly clear that our town charter, Section twelve fourteen, included casino game revenue, meaning it went into the general fund and it was up to the voters at an FTR to determine how that money was to be spent. For the first time ever that I know of in a charter review, the town council refused to put any of the charter review commission proposals as written to the voters, and instead included their own proposal for the casino gaming, uh, gaming revenue, which was to give town council control of it, um, which failed. Voters voted it down. Now, it's, it seems curiously that the town council is trying to have it both ways. Um, the, the ordinance that is put out, although it acknowledges that the casino revenue does go into the general fund, it then, um, grabs it out of the general fund, not by voter's approval at an FTR, by resolution. But just as its own mechanism of taking control of it. Um, I am a lawyer. I'm a little concerned. The opinion that was requested by the Budget Committee from the town solicitor, Marcello, I think has a couple of problems in his citing of the Rhode Island law. Um, the two sites that he uses in the beginning, forty-five, two, three, and forty-five, six, one, sort of talks about cities and towns. And, but it clearly makes a distinction between a city and a town. And then, um, but he sort of conflates them at that point. But then the Rhode Island General Law forty-five, eleven, one clearly does state that voters of any town, as far as I know, Tiverton is still a town, and we do have an FTR, may vote to establish a fund to be designated as a reserve fund for capital expenditures. I, I really do feel, and frankly, uh, Denise, you mentioned in the proposed ordinance, I don't see any mention in any of the sections of committee. I mean, we have voters in an FTR to make this decision. This is clearly an attempt, I think, to wrest control of casino revenue from the voters at the FTR to the town council. Even if it's by a majority of the town council, it is not being proposed as something the voters get to vote on at an FTR. The Tiverton voters have already addressed this matter in the negative and deserve, again, to be able to address this matter at an FTR as a proposed, you know, what, what is it called? Not regulation, resolution. It is not a town council grab of casino revenue. And when I look at the, at the actual ordinance, the, the real problems I see is this funny little game that's going on under the proposed, um, ordinance A, any revenues or payments shall be paid into the town's general fund. So they're acknowledging twelve fourteen prescription that any go into the general fund, and then, but then they go, and then they immediately.
Nancy, you're, you're out of time. Could you wrap it up, please?
Okay. I, I mean, I am. Um, it goes out immediately out of the general fund and not by the voters' vote, but, um, by the, by the town council. So I'm very, very concerned about that. And just again, for the rec, uh, this thing came up as the original resolution when I was on the town council, and it was voted five to two in favor. I, I believe Donna Cook and myself did not like this ordinance when it first came before us. Thank you.
So Justin Katz has his hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to note for everyone that this ordinance is in place right now. And I also would like to note that, um, the, the, the Budget Committee did ask Mr. Marcelo, Attorney Marcello, to give us an opinion on whether the town council could do that. He did do, he did write an opinion, which he did say that we can do this. Um, and it was asked, this opinion was asked by the Budget Committee, and it's part of the package.
That's, that's the opinion.
Okay, Nancy, um, you don't have the floor. Um, I see other hands up. Um, could you bring Justin Katz in, please?
Yeah.
Justin, go ahead.
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Uh, good evening. This is Justin Katz. Uh, thank you for opening this item up for public comment. Uh, regarding the substance of the policy, I, I definitely disagree with this method of handling the gambling revenue. The charter calls for all, all money into the town to be handled through the regular budget process. And with a vote at the Financial Town Referendum, this money is no different. Now, maybe a majority of my fellow electors still agree with that, maybe they don't. Uh, but the point I wanna make is that the way you're going about this is all wrong. It's just wrong. I don't agree with your attorney's opinion that you have the authority to restrict this money, though, through an ordinance. But this is bigger than the technical question of the law. We've seen enough of that in town to know that you can, you can craft the law to make it seem like it's, it's legitimate. The real fundamental point here is that the people of Tiverton have already spoken directly on the matter of handling casino gambling revenue in a town. And simply as a matter of respect for the people, you should honor that result. This is not an open question that hasn't been addressed before. So in the fifteen years that I've been watching town government, this sort of action is at the heart of all of the conflict, and we know there's been a lot of conflict. What happens is a handful of people with the power in a town government force their view, no matter what has have said, whether it's an FTM in two thousand and eight or this right now. We have to stop that cycle. Voters have taken a position directly on this question. And the result that they wanted was for the money to be handled through the Financial Town Referendum. Again, maybe their opinion has changed. Maybe it hasn't. But you shouldn't just force this through a different door. Put a resolution, if you're concerned about the COVID and whether we'll get the minimum casino revenue this year, put a resolution on the ballot at the upcoming FTR. And then, once that passes, if it passes, pursue another charter change, uh, on a ballot. That may mean that you need to do more work finding the path that everybody in town can live with, but that's supposed to be what representative democracy is about. Our system is not supposed to work. Where elected officials try for a direct vote with the people because that looks better. And then when they don't get their way, there's a Plan B. And they say, oh, well, things have changed. Uh, there's COVID. There's, this is not the way to handle it. We're, we're, we're not gonna respect that vote. We've got better ideas. That is dictatorship-type stuff. The prior council got away with it because of confusion with COVID. This council does not have to follow that pattern. It had a sunset. It seemed like a temporary thing. This bait and switch where we're gonna take away the sunset and put it back in place doesn't change fundamentally what you're doing. Passing this policy will gut the authority of the Financial Town Referendum, the authority of our town charter, and respect for the democracy within our town. Please do not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
There's, uh, one more. Hang on. There's a Diane Funtworth. Hang on, I'll bring her in. Diane? Denise, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, Diane, I just wanna say something before we continue. This ordinance is already in place. The question right now is whether we remove the sunset clause. That is the question right now. Um, okay, go ahead, Diane.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to respectfully express my opposition to the town council removing the sunset provision on the recently enacted casino gaming revenue ordinance. With the current expiration date of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, you have restricted the current year's receipts, which I expect will come in at over one million dollars that you will have available to spend in fiscal two thousand and twenty-two. Additionally, there is no expectation that the current year general revenues will fall short, requiring a portion of the casino revenue to fund the gap in a three percent minimum on assigned fund balance as per the charter. Permanently codifying this ordinance will not stop either the Budget Committee or petitioner from filing a petitioner's budget, which would require withdrawal from the town's general fund, uh, also requiring casino funds to be used to fill in the gap before the restriction of funds for municipal capital spending is enacted. Section twelve fourteen, which has been brought up already of the town charter speaks to the requirement that all fees be deposited to the town's general fund. While I understand that there may be a debate regarding the definition of fees, I respectfully assert that holding these funds in a restricted account for any purpose, removing it from the annual budget process whereby voters have a say in how the money is spent is contra to the intent and the spirit of the Financial Town Referendum. With that said, I agree that the funds earned by the town from the operations of the casino should be spent wisely and with intent. The voters of Tiverton deserve a say in that matter. And I propose that over the next year, a long-term plan for the use of casino funds be drafted and put to the voters for their consent as a charter change. I agree with the plan to put together a group of voters tasked with drafting such a plan with representation from the town's elected bodies, as well as non-elected voters who have interest in participating in this endeavor. Allowing the current ordinance to expire paves the way for this effort and incentivizes the elected bodies to work together to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
There is nobody in the waiting room. I'll read the, um, I'll number one more time. It's, um, eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven. The meeting number is eight three one one zero one five eight six six nine with the passcode of five six zero five three eight.
We'll take a minute.
Looks like Nancy Driggs would like to speak again.
Uh, no, only once, once for everyone. Um, while we're waiting to see if anyone else new would like to speak. Um, while we're waiting to see if anyone else new would like to speak, um, Attorney Marcelo, would you like to go over very briefly why, um, you're a member of random on why this is possible that the town council may do this?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. So I, I, I mean, the memo speaks for itself. Um, I, it's three pages. It gives you the statutory history. Ms. Driggs, who I respect, indicated forty-four eleven dash one does make a distinction between city councils and, and towns that have financial town meetings. But the statute in, when read in full clearly says that the city council of any city and voters of any town in this state in a financial town meeting or any municipal body legally empowered to appropriate funds. That's a very important, or any other municipal body legally empowered to appropriate friends, which in your case is the town council, uh, can restrict funds. So you are another body that is, you know, so the law specifically grants town councils, even those councils that have an FTR or FTM, the power to restrict funds. And that's consistent with state law. Well, that's consistent with your power that's given to all cities and towns to pass ordinances and to make appropriations. So that's where the power comes from.
Thank you. Um, I have not closed the public hearing. I'm still waiting to see if anyone else would like to speak. But while, um, the public hearing is still open, I will open it up to town councils also. Um, Councilor Janik, you did have your hand up before.
There is a member in the public, Joel, who would like to speak.
Go ahead. Let, let the member speak.
All right, Joel, come on in.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, um, please state your name. I see Joel, but.
That's Joel Bishop.
Hi, Joel.
I don't know how many Jaws there are in town, but.
Well, you never know. I don't have to know them all. So go ahead.
Uh, I just want to ask a simple question. What would be the harm in putting this to a vote? Where there's people on both sides that agree and disagree, why shouldn't we put this to a vote? That's my only real question. I'm just wondering what, what would, what would be the harm in putting it to the public and letting the public decide whether or not, how, how these funds should be spent, or whether they should continue this, this ordinance. Thank you.
Councilor Janik, would you like to speak?
I would. Um, so I, I understand, you know, where this came from last year. We were, we were looking at a year with, um, COVID. I'm not sure that this coming year is going to be a whole lot different as we're looking at the budget. Um, I, I do like filling the, um, the fun account up to the 3%. I do have question on the pot D where anything else goes into the restricted municipal capital projects account. Um, you know, this is, this is capital. This is casino money. And I think that it should be available to the whole town, municipal and school side. Um, I do totally agree with the whole idea of doing a committee so that committee members from different, um, walks of life with different ideas, certainly outside of what we're all thinking, can decide how that gets split up. But I'm wondering if we can't just change the language to kind of hold it in an account until we have some resolution as to what people feel we should be utilizing that money for, knowing that it's probably not going to be 3 million for at least this next year. Um, and, and hopefully it will after that, but, um, just wondering if we can't do that. So it's not really just for the municipal capital side. Just my thoughts.
Yeah, we, we could always, um, change that. Um, I think that was just the wording made at the time. We could always change that to, uh, town capital projects, which we are all a town, including the schools. So we could do it that way. And, and we could certainly change that wording and that's what this meeting is for.
Or even, or even just, just casino funds because
Well, Deb, I, I think this committee, um, I was on the last committee and I was, um, actually the chairman of that committee for a long time. Um, at that time, that committee was thinking, and I'm going to call it pocketbooks because that's what we did last time. And some would go into the capital improve, improvement. Some would go into the municipal, um, would go into the general fund. And then there was an idea to actually pay off some of our loans also. So that wouldn't be reoccurring. So, um, this is not stopping this committee. And, um, just by the way, Council Burke has actually, um, volunteered to head this committee. Um, and this is not stopping them from coming to us with all different ideas, uh, how this money should be spent. And, and, um, Council Burke and I have talked about it. Lincoln had a really good way of doing it. And this committee may want to bring Lincoln into this like we did last time. The town administrator was very specific on, on, um, the mistakes they made and the mistakes they didn't make. And, um, he was very, very good. So this is just for now, but this committee, I, I would think would come with us with some creative ideas on how to spend this money and maybe do it in different pocketbooks or envelopes. Um, but that, but that's open. That's totally open for discussion. Uh, Council Edwards?
You're muted, Jay.
Jay, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, what Deb was saying, just to be, to remind everybody, municipal capital restricted also includes the school and library requests for capital. So they still do have access to it. They just have to submit their requests. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention was, like Denise has said a couple of times, but what we're really doing here is removing what we'll call the sunset clause. So it technically it leaves it open-ended. I'll use the word forever, although it isn't. Because any town council at any time can send this or it could be done, you know, through vote. The only other thing I would question here is in D, where it says any money transferred into this kind of account cannot be expended until fiscal year 2022. If we're going to remove the sunset clause, then we need to modify the date statement on that to something like until the following fiscal year.
We could do that. Um, my hope, and no pressure on this committee whatsoever, but my hope was we'd have some kind of, um, suggestion and keep in mind when the committee comes to us with their ideas, this ordinance will have to be changed anyway to whatever we just decide should happen. I was
But that could take a little while.
Well, I saw that 2022 and I was hoping to put a little pressure on them that maybe we could get some suggestions by the fall and, um, have some kind of plan before 2022. Um, we could change it, but, but there's nothing. If it doesn't look like it's going to happen by 2022, it may not be a bad idea to revisit this. That's awesome.
But we could do that.
That's why I thought that that date might at least, to me, if it's, it's a future end to this where we need to address this again. And that's what, that's why when I looked at this, I decided, why not keep that in there? Because with everything we have to do daily, this will be a reminder that we've got to get back to this. Um, and, and I think the committee, there's been a lot of work done already. And, um, I'm hoping to pull all those minutes. So I'm hoping the committee, they don't have to start real fresh. They can look at what the other committee, um, discussed. But I was hoping, and no pressure of course, but I was hoping that maybe we could have some kind of suggestion by the fall. Um, Council Burke put up his hand first and then, uh, then Council Cook.
Um, a couple of things, Madam President. One is I'm not sure if you want to keep the public hearing open still, um, but you can get to that in a minute. Um, second, the budget before us is for fiscal year 22. So we're actually
Yeah, it's 2122 and, and it is a very good point that we could change that to the next fiscal year.
Which would be 2023.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, either that or, or just make a statement. Assuming that this stayed the way it is, not put a date, just say like the following, in other words, don't spend it until you've got it, that type of concept.
Well, it kind of said that anyway. Um, uh,
If I may finish?
Sure, of course you can. I'm sorry.
Um, no, I, so Jay, I, I hear what you're saying. I think if we would amend it to 23 and then we can look at long-term language. Um, so that, because then it still isn't, it's held in reserve basically for another fiscal year, for the upcoming fiscal year. We wouldn't be able to do anything with it until the following fiscal year. Um, the other piece is, you know, I certainly, as I've expressed to you, I'm very willing, um, and I believe very able to, um, uh, facilitate the, uh, committee that, that looks into these. And, um, I want to note, I saw a comment by Sherry Akri in the, um, in the comment section, um, that, uh, you know, Thor had provided some ideas, which I don't know that I have. Sherry, I may, and I'll have to look again, but certainly I am more than happy and I think the committee should take into consideration, um, you know, other, as many ideas as we can as we move forward, for to come up with the best plan possible to make the most effective use of these funds um, on behalf of the town, the schools and, and us moving forward as a community.
Um, yes, um, Thor did send some suggestions and if anyone of you were present the last time this was discussed, Thor was very articulate, uh, when he gave us some suggestions, which were, um, I think it's things we need to consider. And I was kind of hoping that Thor would volunteer to be on this, um, committee because he really has done some research on it. And I think he'd be a very valuable member. And it's just like a hint, hint to Thor to please volunteer. Uh, Council Cook?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I have a couple of thoughts. I just thought it was interesting on the opening that it had to do with that personal feelings on how this should go forward when people in 2018 made it very, very clear through being on a ballot that the people of the town voted on this and said they didn't want it. I truly believe you can have what you want. And yes, the town council can have restricted funds, but I think you can do it within the FTR, just like you do for the paving account and the capital roll, um, I think it's rollover account, or, or carryover, I believe it's called. I think you can do it within the FTR. There's no need to have it, money pulled out and have it on the side of the FTR, not within the FTR. That's the problem. The other thing is, is that what's very different about this is that the charter is voted on by the whole town. And ordinance is by seven people. That's a big problem for me. And it overrules the citizens that already said they didn't want it. So the gaming revenue ordinance is kind of a snub to the voting public. They already rejected in 2018, saying that it really didn't matter what they thought. It matters how someone feels about it now. I do understand, and I do it myself, buckets of money with my own money, and I do understand that. I'm just saying it can be done as, as a resolve like we do for the other different accounts. And as far as having, um, the Charter Review Commission was also voted on by the public and they came forward with uh, proposals that, uh, were not allowed to go forward. People are grownups. They could have decided one way or the other. So i- in a way, what you're putting together is another committee to decide what to do with the money when it's, it can be handled through the FTR very easily. So I think the cons, the consolidation of power to seven people is not the right thing to do. I think it needs to be the people have decided. The people run the town, not the seven people. Yes, we do, government policy. But you need to listen to the people and they already spoke. So why can't we do it through the FTR and let the people speak about where the money want to go? And they can approve the restricted accounts and where you want to spend the money. I think that's the fairest way to go. I'm not against restricted funds. I'd just like them to be in the FTR process.
Thank you, Donna. Mike, did you want to speak? I saw your hand up.
No, uh, no, also.
Um, Chris, is anyone else in the audience? Um,
There's, there's nobody else, nobody else with a hand up.
Yeah, I don't see any hand ups either.
No, if I were, it might be time to close the public portion of the meeting.
Yep, I just wanted to make, um, make sure that people were able to call in because I know sometimes it's difficult to do this. Um, okay, so I'd like to close the public hearing. Um, any council would like to speak? Would any council like to speak? Uh, Council Burke?
Um, just in, in light of the suggestion made on item, uh, section D uh, within, uh, the resolution, I would like to make a, a motion that we amend that to fiscal year 2023.
A second.
So you're making a motion to approve?
To, it's, it's an amendment to the amendment.
Okay. So the motion is an item D to change fiscal year to 2023. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Uh, Council Janik?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Viera?
I know.
Council Cook?
No.
Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Perry?
No.
Okay, um, at this point I'd like to entertain another motion or any further discussion.
So what was the final order on this?
Four, three.
Four, three again? I'm sorry, I want to make sure.
Four, three, four. Four, three in favor. Am I correct? Yes, I'm correct. Uh, Council Burke?
So I'd like to move the resolution as amended?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to, um, approve the, uh, the resolution. It's an ordinance.
The ordinance is amended, I'm sorry.
Can we discuss?
Yeah, um, go ahead, Deb.
So as amended, does that mean that we're taking the expiration date out?
We're making it, yeah, yes.
We've taken that expiration date on the bottom?
Yes.
Um, and can we change the restricted municipal capital to just a restricted casino account?
We could. That would be an amendment to Mike's motion.
No, just another amendment. We've already, we've already approved an amendment on the year. So it'll be an amendment.
Yeah, but we have
The amendment should be for us.
We have a motion to approve the whole thing and Deb wants to
No, I got it.
You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't hear the second. That's why I was
Yeah, so, so we actually have a motion to approve the whole thing without that amendment. So there
We, we have to change the, we have to do
Motion.
Deb, can I, can I, can I ask a, a question?
Yeah.
Given what Jay had said, that that money is still there for everybody, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm unclear as why that would be, um, needed.
Because it says municipal capital.
Right, but Jay had talked earlier about how that's available to the schools as well.
Do you, you think that really is, it really is?
Well, it's a line item under municipal capital. The library has one and the schools have one. They're always there. And the library requests a capital expenditure and the school does.
But does it come from this pot of money? I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at you, Jay, and you're moving around. But does it, does it come from this pot of money?
Well, okay, so the, the, the idea is that we take money and put it into the municipal capital restricted account, which includes which includes that pot of money, if you will, includes equipment replacement and capital improvement. And under capital improvement is the library capital request and the school department capital request. It's done that way every, every budget cycle. So we get our, the budget committee gets a request from the school and the library, and they massage it, and it ends up being on the submitted docket for the FTR.
But is this, so is this the same capital bucket that we were putting money in when we had leftover from the previous fiscal year? And 25% by resolution was going into that capital?
No.
But it's a different bucket?
It's a different bucket. It's a different, but, but I, I mean, if you're more comfortable changing what it says, I have, I personally have no objection.
I don't either.
So if you want to change it to capital, um, to casino, casino capital account, that would be fine with me, anyway.
My, my only question with that would be for the treasure, not knowing what it takes, because that would be a new account for her to set up, I believe, and I don't, I just don't know the mechanics of that.
Well, what account does she have it in now? Because she has this in a restricted account now.
I would say it's probably in the municipal capital projects account.
Denise?
She's still, I don't think she's still here.
It's two separate accounts. We have the capital improvement account, and then we have, yes, it would be called the municipal capital account, because that's what the ordinance called it in May. You're right, you're right, Mike.
So that's a different account than from what we pulled to do the police and fire stuff?
Exactly, exactly, that is a totally different.
That account was 9999, which is the carryover capital account, which had $5,000, $518,000 in, that we spent some of it and bought everything with cash.
Yes, you're right, Donna, yeah.
As long as, as long as it's two separate accounts.
But, but this committee is in charge of coming up with ideas on, on how to spend this account. So this will, this, I assume, will change the idea of whether we do the piggyback banks or whatever we do. So right now, we're calling it the municipal capital project account, but we might call it something different in the future. And like I said, the ordinance is going to have to be rewritten and tweaked according to the recommendations of the committee. So is it okay with you, Deb?
That's fine. My other thing is, rather than take that whole sunset clause out, what about if we just did it to 2022? So that it just gets us one more fiscal year, it gives us time to have that group together and make their recommendations.
So you want to make it to 630 2022?
22, yeah.
That's a whole nother amendment. So that's a whole nother motion, correct? Uh, Mike, you want to help me on this?
Well, it would be a motion to amend the resolution, the.
I'll make a motion.
For us.
I'll make a motion to recommend the revised, to add with an expiration date of 630 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I think this would be a whole nother motion. Am I correct, Mike Marcello?
It is, it is another motion, correct.
So what it would be is to approve the ordinance, but change the sunset clause.
Right, so.
The 530 2022.
No, I don't think anyone's made a motion yet. Has anyone made a motion yet, Madam Clerk, Town Clerk, to, to strike the sunset clause as, as proposed?
Yes.
That was my original motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was your original motion, okay.
Yeah, we changed it this week.
And that was seconded?
Yes.
Okay, who seconded that?
I did, but can we, can he retract the motion?
He can, so I took it, uh, he can if he wants to, but now we have, he has a mo, now we have a, we haven't voted on his motion yet.
Right.
We should probably vote on his motion. If it fails, then we can go to Deb's motion, and she can change the date.
Okay.
Unless Michael's willing to, because we have, the, the hot motion that's on the floor right now is Mike's motion to strike the, the sunset provision, right, Mike?
Or, or the other option is just to Deb, for Deb to make an amendment to my main motion.
Yeah, which you could do, yes, I just want to get to you.
Yes.
You could also, you could also amend Mr. Burke's motion to change, to not strike the sunset clause, but to, to change the date from, to keep the sunset clause, but change the date to 630 2022. You could also make that motion, Deb.
Okay, so.
That's your motion.
I'm going to let Chris talk after we, at least get this motion set.
Okay, so I'm going to make an amendment to that motion to not strike the expiration date, keep that in, and change the date to 630 2022.
And I'll second.
And Bill seconded it. Okay, Chris?
So, because you're amending the motion, just to be clear, Mike, there's also the secondary amendment from the first motion that would carry in that amendment about changing, expanding until FY 2023.
That's already passed, yeah, that's already, that's separate, we already.
That amendment is already passed.
Okay.
That's a clean, that's a clean amendment, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but what, what, Chris is telling you is, do you want to make, if we're making the sunset 630 2022, does it make sense to do fiscal year 2023? Is that what you're saying, Chris?
No, I'm fine with it, I just want to make sure it was included with this amended motion to the main motion.
So, the next, the next vote will be on Deb's amendment.
Okay.
If that prevails, then we go to the main motion as amended by Deb and by me. If that doesn't prevail, then we go to the main motion as presented with only the change in the fiscal year 23.
Okay, all right.
So what we're doing right now, and please, I want to make sure all the counselors are clear. We're voting on Deb's amendment of not, of changing the sunset clause to an expiration date of 630 2022. Is that correct? Everyone's clear on that? Okay.
So it's basically extending this ordinance for another year with the sunset clause.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second by Counsel Viera. Counselor Janik?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Viera?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
I have a question.
Well.
Any discussion after the motion to amend?
Let's go back then, we're not supposed to ask questions in the middle of a roll call, let's go back then. If the chair recognizes the other question, let's, let's go back and have your question answered.
Yeah, I didn't see your hand up, Donna, I'm sorry.
Well, I was waiting for you to say there's a discussion, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Cook.
All right, I really think this is pretty outrageous, that the town already decided that they didn't want the money to be, the casino money to be appropriated in this, in this manner. And yet, we're talking about and continue to talk about changing dates and going forward with something that the town did not want. It's pretty outrageous and an abuse of power. Why bother voting at all for charter? When you're just going to come up two years later and decide that you don't like what the people said, and you're going to go along and do something else? That's it.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll start the vote again after Donna's comment. Counselor Janik?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Viera?
Yes.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
Counsel Perry?
No.
All right, so now we have.
You didn't do Donna or yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Donna?
No.
And I'm a yes. So now we're, we're voting on.
The full, the full motion, the, the, the motion before us would be to approve the ordinance as amended, where in D it's 2023, and in E, the end date is 630 2022. So it would be in it with an expiration date of 630 2022.
So, right, the full ordinance as amended now, because Mike's motion fails because he never got a vote on it, because his motion was amended, so.
Right, so I need a second to the, this next motion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Could I just, can I just say something, it's not my role? I just wanted to clarify something to Counsel Janik's, so the, the, Mr. Edwards is right, we, we took that, that term restricted municipal capital projects account right from, from the budget. So, you know, again, it doesn't, the purpose, you can call that whatever you want, the purpose really is just to set up a restricted account. It doesn't, the committee will decide where that money is spent, once it's in the count. Don't let the title of the count influence what the purpose of, as a purpose is, is to, to set up a restricted account. What we call it, you could have called it, you know, black or white, it didn't make a difference, it's, it's just, that was the purpose.
Thank you.
Any discussion before I go with this vote? Counselor Burke?
I just want to note that in no way is anyone abusing any power. Mr. Marcello's legal memo to us is very clear that this is based on state law, and no charter, I'm sorry, no ordinance can go further than what state law allows it to do. Um, and I'm sure Mr. Marcello would not give us an opinion that would violate law. Thank you.
Counselor Cook?
I'm sorry, Mike, but that is not what I am stating. I am stating that the people already spoke in 2018, you're overruling what they wanted because you want something different. If that's the way it's going to be, why have charter amendments to see what the people want in the first place? It is an abuse of power, and you know it is, and I know what.
No, Donna, I'm sorry, point of personal, point of personal privilege, point of personal privilege.
Go ahead.
Donna, if we want to have civil conversations, accusing people of abusing power does not provide for that. We have disagreements on things, and that's fine. But I'm not going to sit by with a fellow council member accusing anybody else here, including myself, of abusing power because we have differences of opinion.
I understand what you're saying, Mike, but the very thing we're doing here is overruling what the people decided in 2018. And I understand that Mike did, did his dissertation or ruling or legal ruling on it, and that's fine. But it does not take away the fact that you're overruling what the people wanted in 2018 because you didn't like it.
Donna, um, I just want to say that in 2018, it was a very slim vote. And in my opinion.
It doesn't matter.
Donna, I'm speaking now. Donna, I am speaking now, you're out of order.
You're always speaking, you don't let anybody speak. You're speaking so much that you ruled over people that voted in 2018. You just eliminated them.
Donna, you're out of order. You are out of order.
The whole thing's out of order.
I am saying right now, if many things, we have seen the casino money come in, we've seen it not be guaranteed. We've seen things as COVID change what some people might think. As counselors, we can do this, we have a legal opinion. And as counselors, we, we deal with the day-to-day expenses, we deal with the day-to-day problems. And if we feel that this is our fiscal responsibility to do this right now, we are not doing anything wrong. So now I'm, if there's any further discussion, I'm going to go on with the vote. Counselor Janik?
Ma, ma.
Go ahead, Joe.
Madam President, I just want it to be known that back in 2018, when I was on the council, I, I went along with what the people wanted, that's what the people wanted. They, they voted for the casino, and I felt they should have a say where the money goes. And that's why I stick by my decision tonight. Um, that's how I've always felt, I made it known back then. Whether it passed by one vote or 500 votes, it passed. And, and that's why I stick by what I decided back then, and I'll stay with that today.
Thank you, Joe. Counselor Janik?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Viera?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
No.
Counselor Burke? I can't hear you, Mike, you're on mute.
Yes.
Counsel Perry?
No.
And I'm a yes, it passes 5-2. Thank you, everyone. Um, I'm not, uh, now we're at Board of Licenses. John? Easy Packers, Skyzy Pack, 48 Island View Drive, request approval for annual renewal of private detective license. Is, is John here?
I don't see him at the moment. Hang on, let me finish. I don't know if he has a phone number.
Well, it's okay, um, this has been looked at by the police chief. And all the documents are in order, Joan?
Yes.
Any questions? This is a renewal, and I would imagine if there's been a problem, it would be brought to our attention. Um, any questions from the council? Um, do I have a motion? Uh, Counsel.
Bill has one.
Yeah, Counsel Viera?
I would just like to move the agenda item and motion to approve, uh, agenda item number eight, Board of Licensing, John Skripiak, 48 Island View Drive, request approval for annual renewal of private detective license.
Madam President?
Um, do I have a second? Are you seconding that, Joe?
No, I, I had a question, but I'll, I'll second it just for the sake of the question.
Okay, so I have a second by Counsel Perry, discussion, Joe?
Yeah, on here, on the application, it says 48 Island View Drive, but then it says 230 Kearns Avenue. Um, just to look, you know.
Well, one has, one has.
On 48.
The top is the business and the bottom is the home.
Right, correct.
48 Island View Drive is a residential, is a residence, I don't see how that could be a business. That's what I'm surprised at.
That's where the person lives, I think.
Well, he says.
Yeah, he has two addresses. His 48 Island View Drive is his business address, and he has 230 Kearns Avenue as his home address.
But 48.
I can't tell you the 48 Island View Drive is, is not a business.
Well, that's in Nanaquawka. I happen to be familiar with the address, that's in Nanaquawka, that's a residence, that's why I'm a little, I'm a little confused whether it's a business or a residence, because he says 230 Kearns Avenue was also his residence. That's the only question I have.
We can, um, we can call.
Maybe the police chief, or maybe the police chief knows, um, if that is a business.
Patrick, would you like to join us, please?
There he is. Good evening.
Good evening. Do you know anything about these two addresses?
So the only thing that I do know is Mr. Skripiak, as you all know, has had a private investigator's license for many years with the town. He meets all the requirements of the ordinances. I believe the 230 Kearns Avenue address, if you look at his traveler's insurance power of attorney, is designated as doing business as EOS Investigations. So I believe the 230 is the business, even though it is a residence. Um, and then obviously, the 48 Island View Drive is clearly a residence. Um, so whether it's a base of operations, or he is part of a private investigating group, so maybe another gentleman or another person lives at 230, and they're running the business out of that residence. So he's listing that as the residence of the investigations and also his home address. But I have no objection to approving this license, but for point of Counsel Perry's, I can contact Mr. Skripiak to get some clarity if you, if you desire.
Yeah, because it's very strange, he puts his business address as Island View and his home is 230 Kearns.
And they're both residents.
Yeah. All right, um, any other questions? Well, I have a motion, and I have a second, and, and, um, we could always, I'm, we could always have the chief, um, check in on these address conflicts. But I'll vote on them, um, I'll do a vote on the motion. Um, all those in favor? Counselor Janik? Counselor Janik?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Uh, yes, I'll go, yes.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, unanimous. Appointment to resignation, Tiverton Housing Authority, five member board, five year term, one vacancy. Jeanie McDurfee, 2411 Main Road, request reappointment to expire 1015 2025. Continued from the meeting of February 22nd. Um, during the agenda meeting, we had discussions about this. It's still not very clear on um, why the Tiverton Housing Authority has has not um, documented any minutes, meaning I guess we did hear from the director who felt that she didn't need to. There's also a member on this board that there might be a conflict of interest because they're on two boards. And because this board is um, somebody help me with this, it's a state. There's some reason why this uh, the person that's on this board may not be able to be on a town board. Um. This uh.
Maybe maybe states such.
Yeah, it was states that Jim. So during the agenda meeting, um, Counsel Burke suggested that maybe him and I need to meet with the chairman and clarify some of the questions that we were having about this committee and then bring this back on the next meeting, if that's okay with everyone.
So moved.
Do I need a motion to table this again?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And Jay, do you have your hand up? No, okay, it looks like you have your hand up.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
Well, I will ask a question. So is the issue that Jeanie McDurfee is is already on another board and there's.
No, it's not her. It's not her, it's another member. I think I think what's very confusing about this, we we have the right to, we have to appoint members to this. But we really don't have any documentation of their year to year, what they do. Um, they're 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 not filing any minutes with the Attorney General. Um, and I'm not, and I think what I want to know is 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 what their real what their job is. And if we're going to put members on there, I think we need to know what what their function is.
Well, I I agree with you. Seems to me they're a public body and they're they're bound, they're required to file with the Secretary of State and post minutes and agendas.
Well, I will tell you that we did look into a couple of other towns and their their housing authority is posting agendas and they are posting minutes. So um, I uh, I guess they don't feel they have to, but we just I would feel better if we talked to the chairman.
Mike Marcelo, yeah.
No, I just want to just 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 I would get a little far afield, but I'm on the point, but I want to, I did speak with their lawyer last Friday and indicated that I believe that they needed to file the minutes and agendas. She kind of thought I was right, but she was going to look into it. So I want to say that she agreed with me, but I think that will be corrected. And as far as uh, what their role is, uh, after their appointment, I'll be happy to provide you a a brief memo. The statute does require them to submit to the council at least once a year a financial report of their activities. I don't know if that's been done.
Looks so.
I don't know if that's been done either. I don't remember um, if if I ever remember receiving that.
I could never find anything.
Yeah, well, I I just think it would be appropriate if we talked with the chairman. But that's up to you guys. So I'd like to table this. Um, so the motion is to table it until the next meeting. Um, and I have a second, all those in favor, Counselor Janik?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counsel Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
And Counselor Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. General Business, A, Maureen Morrow and Christine Bandoni, request repeal of the resolution 1901, resolution supporting the Second Amendment and imposing infringement of the right to bear arms, adopted 632019. Um, I see Christine and Maureen are both here. Either one of you can speak on this, please.
Sure, um, so this is Maureen Morrow. And um, as you stated, um, I'm here tonight with Christine Bandoni. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Maureen.
All right, thank you very much for giving us time on the agenda. Christine and I are both longtime residents of Tiverton. We were present in May of 2019 when former Councilor Katz introduced a resolution declaring Tiverton a Second Amendment sanctuary town, wishing to join eight towns in Western Rhode Island. Um, in preparation for the meeting, I think you all received um, a map of the state of the state of Rhode Island as well as a letter that I will reference later in my comments. The town hall was filled with many Second Amendment activists, many from out of town. After listening to citizens from the town of Tiverton and outside who spoke for and against such a resolution, a vote was taken and the resolution was narrowly defeated. The council president then called a recess. There was some discussion behind the table among a few of the counselors. Many in the crowd dispersed, thinking that the um, resolution had been defeated. And then uh, some changes were introduced after the recess recess was over. One of those changes that found its way to the final resolution is, I'm going to read a portion of it. Whereas the Tiverton Town Council members each took an oath to support and defend the United States Constitution, the Rhode Island Constitution and the laws of the state of Rhode Island, which are not deemed unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, it be resolved. And then it goes on, indicating that their um, town counselors at this point are including in the resolution a manner or suggestion that they can be the arbiters of what's constitutional constitutional and what is not. So at a later town meeting, about two weeks later, this final resolution was introduced. The word sanctuary was also removed and it passed. Tonight, Christine and I request that this resolution be repealed. It's important to note that despite the removal of the word sanctuary, defined as a safe place or a place of refuge, Tiverton is shown on the website of gunrightswatch.com and that's the map I provided you in your materials. It's clearly shown as a sanctuary town. Former Councilor Katz introduced this resolution to, in his words, send a message to the State House regarding gun legislation. Countering that, I and others that evening offered that using the town as a whole to send a message without an issue about an issue that deeply divides our country was inappropriate. Instead, the council members and any citizen could go to the State House, as Christine, I and many other citizens have done, and provide written and oral testimony, attend rallies, mail postcards, knock on doors, email and meet with representatives, and then work to elect representatives who share our belief about common sense gun laws. This is how a representative democracy works. At that meeting in May 2019, some of you recall that our chief of police spoke very directly when asked about this uh, resolution. And he said that he and his force are required to enforce all state and federal laws related to firearms and that the force uses discretion at all times in carrying out this duty. He added this comment, I believe, because the draft resolution and the final stated, quote, "The town council affirms its support for the exercise of sound discretion in the enforcement of laws impacting the constitutional rights of citizens under the Second Amendment." This affirmation included in the resolution implies that sound discretion somehow goes beyond what the chief stated as current enforcement, as in perhaps a wink and a nod with regard to laws to which some members of the public disagree. In a 2019 letter from every town law to members of the National Sheriff's Association, which I have provided to all of you, the following key points were made. Such resolutions have no legal force or effect. They threaten to undermine the rule of law across the country. Local politicians and sheriffs declaring their towns and counties Second Amendment sanctuaries seek to disregard the will of voters in their state by declaring themselves arbiters of the law. And then the final point that's made is these resolutions attempt to bypass the democratic democratic legislative process in their states. To summarize, we ask that this resolution be repealed. It was conceived by two former council members who were expressing their personal views about gun laws in the name of the town of Tiverton. Citizens must abide by the state and federal laws regarding guns, period. And now Christine has a few comments um, to add. Christine?
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I basically echo what Maureen has said and just wanted to add a few comments. When the Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution was put forth, one of the laws that was being targeted as unconstitutional or government overreach was the red flag law that had been recently passed in the state of Rhode Island in the aftermath of the Parkland High School mass shooting. The people putting forth this resolution had fears about the law that have never materialized. Nobody's guns have been taken away from them without due process. There there were no excessive costs to storing guns that were removed for the safety of others. And there were no problems with guns being damaged while in the care of municipalities. On the positive side, the law has prevented suicides, domestic violence and murders, including mass shootings on 33 occasions. This is in Rhode Island from June 2019, 2018 to 2019. I don't have data for 2020. Our police chief has stated that he would uphold the laws as written. This resolution has no legal effect whatsoever. However, these resolutions publicly and wrongly suggest that local power politicians have the power to decide for themselves if laws are constitutional and if they decide they are not, to ignore them. This is not how the law of checks and balances works in this country. Courts decide if something is unconstitutional. Courts have repeatedly held up red flag laws from legal challenge and no court has held that any such law is unconstitutional under the Second Amendment or due process. I ask that you repeal this resolution, support our local police department in enforcing laws as they are written, whether or not you personally agree with these laws. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Thank you, both of you. Um, anyone from the council like to make a comment? Counsel Edwards?
I agree with uh, these two ladies. As individuals, as a town, as counselors, we cannot pick and choose the laws that we agreed to uh, abide by. We don't have that authority, we don't have that power, we don't have that right. There are already plenty of laws regarding gun ownership, gun sales. And we don't create those laws. State and federal governments do. The Supreme Court interprets those laws and rules whether they are constitutional or not. We don't. The these sanctuary resolutions are are meaningless. I disagree with all of them and I disagree with this one.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Janik?
Um, this is a question for the chief. Since this was passed in 2019, have you seen changes in our town and how your um, the police force has managed guns and gun rights and?
Um, he's gonna come on.
He's on, he's on.
Patrick, did you hear the question?
I did. It has uh, if you as far as the gun laws and everything else, we deal with everything that the state and the federal government do as far as changes to gun laws and regulations, as far as any resolution or any impact. Has there been any significant changes either way? No.
So this hasn't impacted at all. So I guess what I'm also wondering is we're not saying that we agree, that we don't agree or we're not upholding the Second Amendment rights.
Correct?
Correct. And I think to to take just a little bit of the uh, the language from the resolution, I can assure you that your police department uses sound discretion in the enforcement of all laws in the entire constitution. Not just the Second Amendment.
Thank you, Patrick. Bill, do you have your hand up?
I do, thank you. Um, first, I'd like to thank Ms. Morrow and Ms. Bandoni for being here tonight. I thought it was a nice presentation, both the hard copy and the uh, their appearance here tonight. Since Zoom, we don't have a lot of uh, town residential uh, participation in these meetings. So I just want to thank them for being here tonight and taking time out to uh, speak. I do have a question for the town solicitor, if he's available.
He's here.
Question regarding requesting appeal of this resolution. This was a resolution of a prior town council. Do we have to repeal a resolution from a past town council or did that resolution kind of die back in uh, October 10th?
Well, so the the resolution, so as the as the presenter's indicated, resolution is nonbinding and the resolution reflects the sentiments of the council that passed it, which obviously has been changed since the last election or a couple of last elections in between. So um, you know, kind of by just operation, the law, the the resolution really has is really defunct because it's it's not, unless this council passes a new resolution um, in favor, you know, adopting the same resolution, it really just kind of fades into the sunset because again, a resolution just expressed the sentiments of that council at that time. Um, and since there's been an election since that time, um, it kind of, it kind of fades away into the sunset. However, there's nothing that prevents you from wanting, you know, if you want to, you know, actually, if this council now wants to repeal it, by repealing it in in a, in a, in a, in a way, you're showing you're not disapproval, but you're you're not a not agreement of the prior resolution of the council. So. Thank you.
Counselor, um, keep in mind, this is not up for a vote tonight. Um, this is a discussion only. Counselor Burke?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to put some context to my comments. Um, earlier on, a member of the public had mentioned that if we chose to repeal this, which I know we cannot do tonight, we would be violating our oath of office. I, with all respect to that um, speaker, I completely disagree. It's a difference in perspective. I know of no one on this council who does not fully support the constitutional rights of every citizen. The reason that I would look to repeal it is for many of the reasons that were already stated and I won't repeat. But in especially in regard to the comments made by Counselor Edwards, that we don't get to pick and choose. We, and I forget if it was him or Counselor Janik, who said, we're not the judge. We are a legislative body and an executive body in one, in many regards. Certainly, we have our executive and the town administrator, but we straddle a little bit of both. But we're not a judge, we're not a jury. We don't get to decide which laws are constitutional or unconstitutional and therefore which laws can't be enforced. And I say this, I just want to give, you know, I grew up in Pennsylvania, I was a hunter. I was an NRA member at one point in time. So I believe strongly that folks have the right to protect themselves. Folks have the right to carry guns for legitimate purposes. But there are things. But there are things that I agree with that are in the legislature right now that should be passed. For example, I don't think anybody, except for perhaps a police officer, should be carrying a gun in a public school setting. The other, another piece of that is, although I was not on the council at the time, when former council member LeBeau wanted to cite his gun shop and shooting range, where it is now located and has been for many years now, there were many who opposed it just because they didn't think that was right. Initially, I thought, well, probably not a good location for it, but at some hearing, Randy had made a statement about, well, it's the end of where the gas line is. So for me to move it further south where others may want it, it would be costly to me. That was a sound argument. Now, I know some of the neighbors don't like it there. I don't live right next to it, so I don't know what it's been like, but I certainly supported his right to have his business there. You know, when I was, and, you know, and speaking to some items that I know so-called Second Amendment proponents, one, they want not to have bans on assault or assault-style weapons, whichever you prefer to call them. Story that I've told friends, when I was thirteen, was hunting in northern Pennsylvania, out with a bunch of folks on a deer drive, which means that some folks are stupidly, in hindsight, walking towards you, scaring the deer, deer towards you while you're waiting for one to come and shooting towards them. So deer came at me, I shot the deer. I had, if you ever watched The Rifleman, I had a thirty-thirty Winchester lever action. Hit the deer, fell, and I emptied my gun at the deer. I hit the deer with the very first shot. I was a nervous thirteen-year-old. I have no idea where those other shots went. Now, hopefully, nobody would be hunting deer with an automatic rifle or a semi-automatic rifle, but I could just imagine what would have happened had I had the legal ability to have that type of a weapon. Then finally, and I have to be a little cautious about this last one, but Denise was on the council, on the school committee with me at the time, when we had a situation come before us with a student related to some potential violence and his access to weapons. And, you know, the school committee made a decision that I did not agree with, but the reason I didn't was because the parent had fully done what he or she needed to do to keep anything away from that child. So, again, they had the right to have those weapons, and they were protected. So I would ask that we put on our next council meeting agenda of a vote to repeal this previous resolution.
I have a second.
One second.
Any further discussion?
The only thing I have to say, and it was very nice to hear from the two ladies that came to the meeting, and I do respect what they have to say, all this resolution really is saying is that the people for the Second Amendment are watching more and more laws. It is infringing on their rights. So as it gets more and more onerous to have, to bear arms or have the right, a right, it makes it more and more difficult, which actually takes that right away. And that's why we had people come and ask, did it not be infringed on, as they were asking the legislature not to make more laws? That's all that was. Thank you.
May I respond to that?
I'm sure, Maureen.
Okay, just very quickly. Thank you for your comment, Councilor Cook. This is why I really wanted to emphasize in my comments that we do have a representative democratic process where citizens can get involved and go to the State House and email their reps and meet with their reps. Using a town as a vehicle to express a view about current laws isn't the way to go because it's really taking the entire town and stating that that's what the townspeople believe because you're our representatives. So I just encourage people to get involved. It can be really rewarding, as Christine and I have found out, and it can be very frustrating, as Christine and I have found out, because sometimes things don't go the way that we hope they do. But, so that's really all, and thank you very much for all hearing us tonight.
Anyone else from the council? Okay, so I have a motion on the floor to put this on the next agenda to repeal the Resolution nineteen oh one. All those in favor? Council Janik?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Perry?
Yes.
Council Burke?
Yes.
Council Cook?
No.
And I'm a yes. Six-one motion passes. Thank you, Maureen and Christine. We'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Two weeks, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. General Business B, Council Burke, limiting truck traffic on side streets connecting Main Road and South Road.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. I've had some discussion with the administrator about this over the past few months. I've had folks from my neighborhood, as well as other neighborhoods, address their concerns about truck traffic and various, you know, specifically some dump, a lot of extra dump truck traffic, some larger trucks that have been using the side streets in the north end of town as pass-through streets. We had situations on both my street and I believe it was Russell a few months ago, where, Merritt Avenue?
Yep.
Where, where, where wires were pulled down because the trucks, you know, were too high for that street. Luckily, at least on my street, there weren't electrical wires. I don't know about on Merritt. They were phone cable wires, things like that, so they did not pose an immediate danger, but certainly people thought they did. And all these streets tend to have families, especially a lot of the older, the properties with older folks who have been living in them for years are beginning to turn over, families with younger children, and the streets themselves were not designed for that heavy truck traffic. So what I would like to see us do is, you know, I'll be happy to work with the chief and the administrator, whoever around this, is to put together proposed ordinance that would limit truck vehicular traffic to local deliveries. So if you're getting new furniture, something at your house, obviously, as long as the truck's not going to knock down wires, they can come up the street, but, you know, pass-through purposes to limit it to probably Cananicas and Sousa, and then obviously there's the highway and Fish Road that they can use, too.
Any discussion? Council Danik?
So, don't we already have limited access on Warren Avenue?
And Muscle Drive.
So, and it's posted, correct? But like, how do we police that? How do we control that?
The police.
The police.
Correct.
Madam President?
Wait a minute. Why doesn't Chief Jones answer that question for Deb?
So Warren Avenue is the only street in town that prohibits all truck traffic except for deliveries.
I thought Muscle Drive also.
Russell is only one-way from Main Road to Fish, but you can go Fish to Main.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's weird.
Yeah. So, and we end to the Vice President's comments, too. We were having an issue on Warren, given Dollar General, they were coming down with the eighteen-wheelers, bus traffic when school is in full session. The buses are trying to do a good thing by trying to relieve the congestion behind them by taking the side streets, but it causes a greater issue. So we've been working with a lot of the local businesses. As traffic increases, it definitely becomes an issue in the residential neighborhoods, for sure.
There was many people that wanted to talk. Council Perry?
Yeah, I've been dealing with this problem for about three years with Chief Jones, Warren Avenue especially, trucks going to Tom's Market and Dollar General, where there's almost been physical confrontations with the residents, and Chief Jones has been working on that. So I know it's been an ongoing issue, and we are, we have been working on it.
Good to hear, Joe. I didn't know.
Chris?
So Chief Jones and I had a long discussion about this today, but apparently we would need to gather the names of all the streets to prohibit the truck traffic, and put it before with an ordinance in front of the council to limit that so that just through traffic would be on Souzer and Cananicas. It is, it is a significant problem, and it should be addressed, and I think that that's probably the most appropriate way for us to look at this is to, I think all intents were to, because Russell and Warren do go straight across, they've now figured out that if they go up, you know, some streets, they can cut across a side street to get to another one, and it's, it's creating a little bit of a nightmare. They found a way around it, so it's now time to fix it so they can't find a way around. But it will take a little bit of an effort, we'll put it together, and I believe that that's what needs to be done, is just us coming up with the names and coming back before you to put it in the form of an ordinance.
Council Cook?
It was interesting, you know, about side streets and trucks because I had brought two twenty-seven-twenty to the attention of the town council, that it was a big problem with truck traffic being routed to West Judson Street. These are big trucks that oil and gas, they're not allowed to go down any other streets, so it's kind of funneled into the one street. The amendment was to include Judson Street West, except for deliveries, and the residents, it's a very residential street, it's not a wide street, just a regular street, and no one seemed to know what to do with it, so these people still have the problem, and I don't think that's right. I mean, there needs to be something done about that problem, too.
Well, I, I think this ordinance would take care of that, am I right? Chris?
I'm not so sure about the Judson Street issue with the delivery. My understanding is Judson Street is the only street that permits local vendors to access the terminal down at the bottom on Bay Street, that there are no other streets that they can come up in the town of Tiverton. That's the only one that's available. They would have to go down to Fall River and traverse back through Fall River to come back into Tiverton. I believe that's the rationale for it, and our Chief Jones might be able to speak more to that, but that's my understanding as to why that is still accessible, that it prohibits business.
Yes, sir. The administrator is correct. There's also issues with the weight of those trucks going down Hilton and Cananicas Street, that given the grade of those streets, they wouldn't be able to make it either up or down, and they're already prohibited. So, and the problem that we're having with people going through, they're trying to get, they're trying to beat the traffic on Fish Road or Main Road. So with Councilor Cook's issue, which is definitely an issue with these big trucks, there's just, given that it's Bay Street, there is no, and Bay Street cuts off in Tiverton, there's really nowhere else for these trucks to go safely unless they cut through this neighborhood or we, or they go around to Fall River.
Council Perry, did you have your hand up?
No, I was just going to reiterate that, that that's the only street that oil trucks or big trucks can go down safely because of the incline, and coming up, the same thing. That's the only reason why they're allowed to use Judson Street.
Council Edwards?
Okay, so I happened to see the one on Merritt Avenue, was a CVS truck eighteen-wheeler. We never see eighteen-wheelers on Merritt Avenue. He was doing maybe ten miles an hour. He was going slow, and he snagged the one wire that was having it, just happened to be dangling down a little bit too low, and he didn't even know he did it. He just kept going, and, and due course, the fire department, police department showed up and took care of it. A lot of the streets on the north end, it's not just they can't carry the weight, it's just, it's not that they're steep or not, they're narrow. And if you have one car parked in front of a house, a big truck almost has to drive up on somebody's lawn to get around it. And that's one of the reasons to not have truck traffic on these connecting streets on this end of town.
Anyone else? So, the administrator, Chief Jones, and would Council Perry and Council Burke like to work with them also to get this ordinance to us at some point?
It sounds like Council Perry has been working with them. I didn't realize that, and so I appreciate that. And Chief, I have to remember, I have some cones that your folks left behind that marked off the wire so people wouldn't run over them. Have to remember to get them, too.
We appreciate that, sir.
So do I need a motion for this, or I don't? I don't believe I do.
No, just we're moving forward, and I guess they'll be, we'll be working to get an ordinance together for the rest of the council.
Thank you. Thank you to all of you. D, request approval to go out for bids on DPW, two used plow and attachments, police vehicles, and two Lucas chest compressions.
Madam President, you skipped C.
Oh, that's me. Okay. All right, so I'm, I'm sorry, planning for future FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget reviews. So revised schedule states that we have to have the municipal budget to the town administrator by May fifth. As we've discussed before, some numbers may come in in April, that could be helpful to the budget process. So what I was thinking, to have a workshop on April tenth, if people feel that's too soon and want to go to the seventeenth, but we do have some items that we still have to discuss, and we have to do final votes. So I anticipate there's going to be two meetings in April anyway. So, how's April tenth for all of you? Is that okay?
That's good.
Okay. And then that'll be everything we have pending, and then we'll probably, hopefully, get some numbers in by then. We probably will have another meeting where we can tweak our numbers according to revenue and state aid numbers that come in or whatever we feel at the time. So right now, we'll do April tenth, and then we'll schedule another one after that. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll do ten-thirty.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
I forgot to mention that.
I was going to do that.
Yeah, so.
Is that the Saturday before Easter? Does that matter to anybody if it is? Okay, I thought it was.
No, it isn't. The Saturday before Easter is the third, and that's why I'm making it the tenth, because I was, I might be away, I'm not sure. So, and I figure maybe by then, some people may be able to travel to see relatives, so. All right, um, okay, that's my item.
Can you just say what time again?
Ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty, okay.
Okay, and now we'll go to the next item. Request approval to go out for bids for DPW, two used plows and attachments, police vehicles, and two Lucas chest compression systems. This was voted on, the council to take out of the capital fund. Chris, would you like to speak on it?
Yeah, I know that you wanted to be very selective about the things that you want to go out to purchase right now. I did send you all today, and I know it's not part of the agenda back up today, but we have already gone out and looked at the police vehicles, or the vendor that is on the MP pricing, so, you know, we've done that work already, but we should at least go out to bid and try to find some of these, at least the Lucas chest protectors immediately, you know, the quicker we can get those, the better. And we'll try to look around to see what we can find for trucks for the snow, snow issues that you wanted. But I think that you wanted to limit what we would go out to bid, and we would try to limit to those particular items. So I just want to get permission to do that.
I'll make a motion that we approve going out to bid for the two-
approve going out to bid for the two DPW used plows, the police vehicles and the two Lucas chest compressor systems.
Second.
Um, I'm not sure if I have discussed this with the council. There was a question uh, by Counselor Janik and if I'm repeating myself, um, I apologize. That when we get the grant money for the police vehicles, that grant money will go into the capital account. Will go back into the capital account. I spoke with the treasurer. Have I said this before? I don't think so.
Yes, yes.
So I spoke with that. I know I talked to Counselor Janik about it because it was her question and I called her the next morning after I talked with the treasurer. But um, yes, that will go back into the account where we spent the money. So.
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
And the grantee agency also agrees. Wherever the money comes from is where the money would go to. So that's, that's appropriate.
Okay. And that, that's good because that's like thirty eight thousand dollars that goes back into the capital account. All right. Um, so I have a motion on the floor in a second. Counselor Janik?
Yes.
Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Viera?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Counselor Burke has left the library there. I think that's a library. Is he there? There he is. Do I have your vote?
He's muted.
Mike, Mike?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, discussion impossible vote to establish, establish the dog park committee by resolution. Um, Kim Sutherland is here and so is David Paul. Um, Kim called me because um, the dog park is ready to start bidding for breaking ground and other things. Um, she wanted to know what the process was to go through with this. With discussions with the town administrator and the town lawyer, we never officially made this a committee of the town council. Now that they're going to start going out for bid and start doing construction on town property. Um, they should be um, a town appointed committee. Also, um, there was uh, there was discussion about the minutes. Kim said that they had, she has been taking minutes, which is very good for this committee. Um, and she had those minutes. Um, so, so we just decided at this point, we should make this a town committee. Um, I also invited Kim and, and Dave here to give us some progress regarding what stage they're at right now, the fundraisers they've done and any questions that the council has. Um, Dave and Kim, welcome.
Thank you.
Would anyone, um, which one of you would like to speak on what's going on?
Dave, why don't you start us off?
Is Dave on mute?
Dave, you okay? Dave, can you turn your microphone on?
It dogged off and on, so he's got a problem.
Well, okay, so I guess I'll start.
I see he's here, but I, yeah.
Okay.
This is welcome to Zoom world.
Yeah. Yep. Um, so we started, we put, um, we put our work into several different phases and we've just finished our phase one. So we have, we have a committee that's assembled and we have three subcommittees, um, a site work subcommittee, communication subcommittee and a fundraising subcommittee. And our goal in phase one was just to get ourselves um, more organized. We have a Facebook page. We have a website. Um, and to, um, we were looking for, to reach the twenty thousand dollar mark on fundraising before we moved to our next phase. So that's the reason why I had contacted Denise is because we just, um, we just about hit twenty thousand. We're just a few hundred dollars shy of that. So we are looking to, um, to get some additional work done. So what we've done besides the, the twenty thousand dollars in fundraising is we had a land surveyor come out and go onto the land on, and just mark where the land is for us. Uh, he had some questions. Um, so I say, I say it like it's an official day. The land surveyor is my husband. The land surveyor.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep, he volunteered it. So you know, we, if it's free, it's for us. So he did that. He, um, he marked up a, a plan and the only thing we were waiting on, um, that we have now is we were able to talk to Chief Rymals and talked to Mr. Rogers at DPW. And we got um, the septic plans for the new septic that was done at um, Station Three. Um, because Bob had indicated that we should be ten feet off of um, the septic leach field for our fencing. So we, we wanted to make sure that we um, we weren't in any area that was going to cause a problem for, for anybody else in town. Um, the other thing that he had mentioned that we were looking at, that we're going to be looking for some guidance on is um, ADA um, compliance. Uh, there's one ramp, uh, that's going to the sidewalk near the library. Um, that we're looking, we kind of changed the original plan. Um, David could talk about that more because he's more technical than I am, but if we were going to go the original way um, and go straight path from Roosevelt into the land, then we were going to have to go over to drainage swales. I think they were called, Dave. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
Right. So um, you know, it's good to have all these people with this technical knowledge helping us out. And um, so we're looking to make sure that we're ADA compliant and um, able to talk to the town about how we can do that and how we can get people safely onto um, the property to use it with their dogs. So we have a basic plan. Um, we have a basic size of the park. Um, we've done some initial work on um, trying to gather quotes for fencing. Uh, we have some volunteers, um, for some site clearing work, um, that we really just need guidance from you as to how we go about doing that and what our next steps should be.
Dave, we can see you now. Is there anything else you'd like to add to Kim?
You, you know, I, I actually didn't hear most of what she said. My uh, it was kind of weird. My computer actually timed out, which I guess you guys talked about the casino too much. Um, so um, no, I, I, like I said, I, I kind of caught a little bit about what she said. Um, we are essentially at the point now of um, breaking ground and um, starting to get this thing uh, make it a reality. So uh, here we are. Um, fundraising goal initially has been met. And uh, we're ready to move to phase two.
All right. So um, Kim was actually had called me to, to talk about the people that will be working on the land and whether or not we had to go out for bid for some of these projects. I think the answer is yes, correct, Chris?
Correct.
All right.
Expending monies on behalf of municipality, we do have to follow the, the appropriate bidding procedures.
So whatever work you need to get done, um, we need to go out for bid and you, um, the procedures to come to the council and request um, to go out for bid for the breaking of the ground or whatever you need. Um, do you have any questions regarding that?
Yes. Um, what kind of, what kind of things are we coming to you for? Like if we, you know, we want to create a new website and so we're going to, we'd like to expend some money on that website. That's not going to take thousands of dollars. It's just going to take a couple hundred. Do we still have to come to you to ask for that?
I don't believe, uh, Chris?
I'll get to the criteria. As long as you, I, I get, you know, the contact informations and all that stuff and we'll, we'll put together a plan of things that you can't expand without, you know, bidding uh, that fall within the, you know, under the limitations, um, that are necessary and uh, to, to, you know, do what you're doing.
That'd be great because it's like, uh, we need like committee for dummies. We need a manual.
Yeah, it would be things that go outside the, you know, the, you know, the limitations that we would, you know, like if you're going to buy fencing or if you're going to have somebody come in, do the excavation and all that stuff that uh, at cost. Uh, if you're not using volunteers and even if you're using volunteers, we would probably want to make sure that they are appropriately insured so that we don't wind up with any of it, you know, any kind of issues.
Right.
I think the best answer to your question is if you and Dave work with Chris and he can uh, talk you through it. And of course, Mike Marcello is always available if there's any questions. I think he has his hand up. Mike, do you have your hand up?
I do, Madam Chair. I just want to caution the council. The thing on the agenda was discussion. Possible vote to establish a dog park committee. I think their presentation was given to indicate, you know, why they might need a committee. Why a formal committee needs to be established, but now we're getting a little far afield from the committee being established. I just want to make sure we comply with the overall legal.
My question is, if we appoint this committee, do I need to know all the members and, and we need to put that in the motion that these members are appointed?
Me tonight?
Yes.
Well, you can establish a committee and uh, just establish the number. If you want to appoint some people to it, you could. But I would just, I would just put the number on, on the committee because I think we need to list the members that you are going to appoint. Yes.
Well, the members are already part of this committee and I don't think any of us want to take anyone off.
Let's not kick anybody out, please.
So, you know, this, um, just to be clear, Dave, Dave, I believe it was Dave that came to us um, way back and, and told us his plans and we gave him his blessing and um, they've done a terrific job and they've gotten, they've gotten to this point and I can, I, I really commend you on this and it's a good project and um, a lot of people in Tiverton will really enjoy it. Um, but what I'm asking is he already has a committee with members. So would it be easier if he just gives us the list of the members and we appoint those members tonight?
Um, the appointment is really not on the agenda because you're just establishing a commission. It doesn't really say. Appoint members, yeah.
How many members do you have, Dave?
I have, um, right.
Go, go ahead, Kim. I think about nineteen.
Eighteen.
Okay, so we can, um.
What, you're just about to establish the committee or have a resolution prepared for next meeting establishing the committee with the membership and we'll figure out. Yeah, they can give Chris the information. We can, I can get a resolution together.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. Um, and then we'll have to appoint all nineteen at another meeting?
No, we could put on the same resolution.
Okay.
Establishing a point at the same time.
Okay, so um, I think the main theme here is you need to work with Chris. And then come to us at the next meeting. How does that sound? And, and Mike can also help with the resolution like he always does or look at it far as. So we'll see um, in two weeks. Uh, but I do want to um, say thank you. I think you've done a marvelous job. Anyone? Anyone in the town?
We really started grassroots. Uh, really it goes back to Barbara Pelletier, twenty plus years of trying for a dog park and then with the uh, untimely passing of uh, of Mr. Jones, it kind of uh, in a, in a weird way breathed new life into this project and um, you know, Kim came on board about five, six months ago and really kind of kicked it into high gear. Uh, we've got a very diverse group and uh, they're from all over town. And it, it's a heck of a group and uh, we're going to get this thing moving. So. Um, and we thank you guys for any guidance you can give us.
I want to thank Joe Perry too, who's been coming to all our meetings and giving us a lot of advice as well. It's been very helpful.
Absolutely.
Anything else from the council? Uh, Counselor Viera?
Just want to thank everybody who is involved with this dog park. Uh, question to Madam President, do we need to vote on a resolution before they leave?
No, because we don't have the resolution in front of us. So the resolution will be brought to us by um, net uh, in two weeks and we'll vote on it and appoint a committee.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you guys for coming. Um, I hope this helps you a little bit and um, speak with Chris and we'll see you in two weeks.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, the next item, discussion impossible vote for advisory committee to comply with section two one oh seven casino gaming revenue ordinance. Um, I have a few ideas and then we can, well, I've expressed my ideas really. Um, I think we should have a town counselor, a budget committee member, a school committee member and four members of the public. I think four would be, it makes a seven person committee. If people think it should be more than that, um, that's okay. Um, and also I was thinking as in advisory roles, uh, we should have the town administrator and the superintendent present um, for the discussions also, not as voting members, but, but just to be there to put their input in. Um, does anyone have, uh, like I said before, Counselor Burke has said that he will chair it. Um, and I, and I definitely approve of that. I think Mike would do a really good job. Uh, Mike?
Madam President, thank you. I would just uh, think that we would want to have as an advisory role to the um, town treasurer.
Yes, I'm sorry. You're right. And someone did suggest that to me also. Um, does everyone like how this committee will be set up and the number of people or does anyone have any other suggestion? So I think our next, next step is to go out and advertise for anyone interested in uh, being on this committee um, from the public. Um, I do want to encourage anyone who may be a past member of the town council, past member of the budget committee, um, someone that's been involved with this process, who, who may have some good ideas, please apply. Uh, because I, I think the more experience on this committee, the better. Um, and Joan can go out and um, place an advertisement for four members. Is four okay or do, do you think we should have more from the public? Counselor Janik?
I, I don't really have an opinion on the, the four members. Um, I think that's a good number. Um, but I'm thinking if we're doing advisory, we're doing town treasurer. Um, plus the town administrator, we're doing the superintendent. Should we do the financial um, school? The financial person from the school.
That's by, yeah, these would only, these wouldn't be voting members.
No, advisory.
Yeah. Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, and that would be fine. My, my rationale for Denise, um, the treasurer is because she knows how we have to set up accounts and, and all that kind of stuff. That was really that piece of it.
Chris?
My, my only suggestion, if you're going to have four members, you should really have five so you don't wind up in ties.
No, no, it wouldn't be, it would be four plus three. Member of the town council, so it'd be seven.
Okay, all right.
It would be seven.
Madam Clerk, Madam President, can we just, can you just name the, for the purpose of the minutes, can you just name those members again? So, well, one member for the town council.
One member of the school committee. One member.
As, as recommended by the school committee? Are you, in other words, are you going to, are they going to appoint someone or are you going to appoint somebody?
Um, Counselor Burke, what do you think?
I think if we're asking them to be on the part of the school committee, then it should be as recommended by either the school committee or the um, the chair, I would say by the respective committees.
So one member of the town council, one member of the school committee is recommended by the committee, another one? Just want to make it so we know what the.
The budget committee.
Uh, again, uh, as recommended by them?
Yes.
Okay. One more?
And four.
And for purpose of the public.
Yes. Joan?
Uh, according to the charter, uh, section seven oh one, uh, budget committee member cannot hold any other town position.
This is advisor, this is an advisory committee.
So it's fine.
Yeah.
And we've done this before where, where we've had different, um, people on it that are actually elected officials on different committees.
This is just advisory. It's purely advisory. That's, that's okay. Doesn't violate the charter.
Okay. Um, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, guys. I just had one more question. Denise, can you just give me the ex officio, ex officio non voting members or who?
Town administrator, superintendent of schools, town treasurer.
Yeah.
And do you all agree with the finance officer? Is that okay with everyone? Okay.
So Madam Chair, when you get a chance, that's going to be the motion that you approve the committee made up of those individuals. Seven members as indicated, plus the ex officio members. So you can take a formal vote.
Ex officio members were what I was trying to think of.
Ex officio non voting.
Yeah, ex officio non voting.
Um, I do have a question.
Janik?
Who appoints those other four members?
Us.
And how would they appoint town council?
Town councils.
They apply for them.
Yes, and we'd interview them just, just like we do boards and commissions. Counselor Edwards?
So this is going to be an official subcommittee of the, of the town council?
It's an advisory committee of the town council.
So that it'll need to be on the. So it'll, it'll need to be on the town website and they'll have to post?
They will have to, they have to post, they have to comply with the open meetings law, but because it's advisory, they do not have to post their minutes on the Secretary of State website because it's advisory only.
So they'll have to send their minutes to us though, right?
Correct.
Okay.
If they want to post the minutes on the Secretary of State, they can, but they don't have to. They're not required by law to do so.
Council Viera, did you have your hand up? Okay, Council Burke?
Just a minor piece. When we say as appointed by the respective committee, the budget of the school committee, I would want that to be by a vote of those committees.
That's fine. Yeah. We can, we can notify them of that fact.
Yeah, I already know a couple of them that are interested, so. We'll see. Anyone else? And would the motion also include that Mike Burke would be the chairman?
If that's what you want to do, you have to your committee.
Okay. All right. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion as Mike Marcello presented it. I don't want to get tongue tied.
Okay.
Don't make the motion. I'll make a motion.
All right, Mike, and the motion would be?
To set up an advisory committee.
Advisory.
For Casino Gambling Revenue Ordinance.
The committee would consist of?
Consist of one.
The town council vice president as the chair. A member of, a member of the budget.
Committee.
And a member of the school committee suggested by them. And four members of the public.
Public, yeah.
And ex officio members, the town administrator, the town treasurer, the superintendent of schools and the financier. Finance.
So move.
Is that okay, Mike?
Just, okay. Again, I would suggest we have clarity as appointed, those members of the budget and school committee as appointed by those, by a vote of those committees.
As recommended by those committees.
As recommended by those committees. By a vote of those committees.
Yeah.
You won't vote, not recommend.
If we're going to clarify that, then we should probably also say four members of the public to be chosen by the town council.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to add that to the motion. You got it, Joan?
I got it.
I think Joan has it. She's shaking her head, yes.
We got it.
As long as it's clear to Joan, I'm happy.
I just want to make sure that the minutes reflect what we're doing, just in case there's any dispute. So that's why I think, I know she, I know Joan's got it.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Do we have to vote to advertise this too or no?
The public members, I think, yes, consistent with your policies, but yeah. I think the clerk is going to send out a notice asking people to apply.
Well, we don't have to put that in the motion.
No, just just automatically.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, Council Janik?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Perry?
Yes.
Council Cook?
No.
Council Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. 6-1 motion passes. Thank you. Discussion impossible vote on appointment of assistant solicitor for, it says persecution, but it's and Joan picked up on her mistake the minute it went out. Prosecution based on recommendation from town administrator and police chief.
On what end of the stick you're on?
Yeah, right.
I have Chief Jones here as well, but we, along with Lieutenant Barbosa, who actually does our district court matters, interviewed, I believe it was seven people that had, out of the, I think there were nine that applied. And they were all very good candidates, but there were three that were, you know, that excelled, that came to the top of the list. We talked among ourselves about the experiences that they each had with the exposure they've been involved with, with district court. And we believe that, we, we agree that Tom Conley probably falls to the top of this with Gary Pelletier and then Allison Quay is the third member. It would be our recommendation that Tom Conley be appointed based on his extensive district court experiences and his familiarity with how the system works and his ability to work well with Lieutenant Barbosa to get our work done. So Chief, do you have anything else you'd like to add to this? I do also know that we reached out to the district court judge for not an opinion about the actual individuals, but the criteria that the judge would be looking for on our behalf. And she was told us that the best thing that we could do is find somebody that does have a breadth of experience in district court. And we think that these three members excel to the top and that Tom actually would be the top candidate. I don't know if Chief Jones has anything, thing else he'd like to add, but.
I have nothing to add. I completely agree with the administrator.
All right. Any, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll make a motion. We appoint the, to Tom Conley. Second. As recommended by the administrator and the chief to be the solicitor's position.
I have a motion in a second. May Council Edwards, I think, correct? Any further discussion? Mike?
Joe, is that for prosecution or persecution purposes?
We disqualified Pontius Pilate.
All right, guys, you're picking on Joan. All right, all those in favor, Council Janik?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Perry? Council Perry, okay, Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, it's unanimous. Thank, thank you, Chief Jones. Town administrator and Officer Barbosa, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Lieutenant.
All right, I lost my, okay, here it is. All right, announcements, comments and discussion, town clerk update on March 2nd, 2021 special referendum.
Yes, Council President, we have completed the requalification of the provisional ballots by the Board of Canvas. Seven were accepted and two were disqualified. The next steps would be to certify the vote. There's a meeting scheduled for tomorrow to do that. If everything works out with the state and they have completed all their steps. So that process is almost complete. Ballots, mail ballots requested were 1795. Mail ballots returned and accepted by the Board of Elections was 1395. Mail ballots disqualified was 53. Two mail ballots were deficient. For early voters at town hall, there was 186. Election Day voters was 359 and provisionals, seven accepted and two disqualified. The cost associated with this election preliminary counts, we're still waiting for one more bill, is $7,222.71. We do have a grant of $3946.97. So that will reduce the cost for this election to $3,275.74 with one bill outstanding. That's the update. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Council Perry?
Yeah, Madam, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I'd like to thank Councilman Viera for attending the inauguration the other day and representing the town. He was the only one out of all the 39 cities and towns that was there representing. Everyone else had honor gods from the police department, so I want to commend Bill for a job well done.
Yes, Bill, thank you. And I did see you on TV. You told me to watch and I did see it.
It's an honor to represent Tivon and at any event that I can. So thank you for allowing me to be there.
Okay, now we're going to go into closed executive session. I'd like to entertain a motion for 12A Town Administrator Rhode Island General Law 42-46582 Collective Bargaining IBPO. Do I have a motion? A second?
A second.
Motion made by Council Edwards, second by Council Janik. Council Janik?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Perry?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
And Council Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed executive session, Town Administrator Rhode Island General Law 4246585, Discussion Overview of the Disposition of Publicly Held Property in the Tivon Industrial Park, continued from January 25th, 2021.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
Yes. Chris, yes.
I would ask that we remove B and C. B, because the appraisal is not in yet. They, I was hoping to get it by, by Friday, but it didn't happen. And then C, that evaluation is not completed yet. That will probably be on your next agenda.
So do I need a motion to table both of those until the next agenda?
Yes, please.
So move.
Do I have a second? Motion's remain in second. Council Janik?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Perry?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed executive session, Town Solicitor Litigation 42/46582 Discussion of Case Status and Exploration of Resolution for Tivon v Lee Shore Realty and All Shore Road Case. CA Number NC 2016-0462.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Council Janik?
Yes.
Council Edwards?
Yes.
Council Viera?
Yes.
Council Perry?
Yes.
Council Cook?
Yes.
Council Burke?
Yes.
I'm a yes, well, we're not.
So move. Second.
Jay?
Hold on, we're live. It's, we're live. This is, we're streaming live.
Andrew back, we're all set.
Sorry, guys, sorry, guys.
Yeah, but don't I have to steal the minutes?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Jay?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Chris?
I don't vote.
I'm sorry, Joe.
We'll let you.
No, thank you.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Donna?
Yeah, is the public going to know about this court case?
No, they're only going to know we sealed the minutes back here because we're streaming, I guess. Yeah.
You didn't ask Joan.
Why can't they know? I don't understand.
Yeah, 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 they're going to know.
We're going to vote on it in public.
They're going to vote on it in public, Donna.
Okay.
No, 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 I don't recommend that. We're just going to, I'm going to take the action. We'll see what happens.
When the action's done.
Done. Yeah.
All right. I did ask Joe. He said yes. Okay, it's unanimous to seal the minutes. We're now in open session.
So Madam Chair, I can report that an executive session, discussion was under A, which no action was taken. And discussion under D, a vote was taken with a disclosure of which would jeopardize the legal strategy of the town. And therefore it will not be disclosed at this time. It will be disclosed at a later date when, when, when circumstances warrant it.
Thank you. I need a motion to, I have to steal the minutes again in public, correct?
You just did. We were in public.
We were in public, I guess. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay.
Third, fourth.
I think I can do a show of hands on this.